Good afternoon, everyone. Very quickly, we'll do roll call to ensure that we have all of our board members with us. Ms. Tolan?
I'm here.
Thank you. Corbett Sanders?
Good afternoon.
Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Here.
Mr. Frisch?
Here.
Ms. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Seismohizer?
I'm here.
Ms. Pocarski?
I'm still here.
Is there not Kovacs?
I'm still here, too.
And Ms. Omesh?
Yeah, I'm here.
I am missing a couple of people, and I don't think I see them. Who am I missing? Help me, please.
Megan, Melanie.
Thank you. Ms. Marin? Not there yet. Ms. McLaughlin? Okay, so we have two board members away from the virtual meeting table, but we will move ahead and certify close as it is 201. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that the Fairfax County School Board convene a closed meeting on November 17, 2020. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do we have someone to move the motion? Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders, seconded by Ms. Darnak Kovacs, all in favor. We have Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Darnak Kovacs, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Omesh, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Seismohizer, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Pocarski, Ms. Tolan, and myself. And that is with Ms. Marin away from the table. Thank you. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our meeting managers, Ms. Cohen and Ms. Seismohizer.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I will be managing the first part of the meeting, and then Ms. Cohen will take over the second part. So I just wanted to frame the conversation today. This is a continuation of our return-to-school work session from last Tuesday. We had had a couple rounds to ask questions of staff and get our questions answered, and what we hadn't been able to do was get to our two-minute rounds of stating our own views and concerns and thoughts for each other to have some board dialogue. So Ms. Cohen and I wanted to frame our conversation this way. Each board member will get two minutes to share concerns, thoughts. If you have questions for staff, please go ahead and ask that question, since we do have staff members here. Just as a reminder, our staff do not have any new presentation or new information per se, but they're obviously able to talk to the presentation from last week and sort of what's been going on in our schools today. I would ask, because we want to focus this section on board conversation, which is what was the reason for continuing this meeting, that if you do have a question for staff, Dr. Braybrand, I would make sure you're okay with this, but that only one staff member answer, and that answer is limited to one minute, so we can really focus on board conversation. If a board member has a question that's not answered by staff, to their extent, they can always ask a follow-up question during their two minutes. We will do this for as many rounds as we have time for. So that is what Board Dean and I are doing for this meeting. Two minutes each. Questions by staff limited to one staff member response in one minute. Dr. Braybrand, I just wanted to make sure you're okay with that.
Absolutely, Ms. Seismohizer. Short and sweet. Our response will be short and sweet. Thanks.
Thank you. The focus really, we wanted to be on board member dialogue, since that was the purpose of this meeting. So having said that, I will go ahead and start our two-minute rounds. Ms. Mullberg, would you be able to time our board members as well as staff response? If you want me to time staff or ask Ms. Cohen, I'm happy to do that.
We're prepared to do it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mullberg. So having said that, if you want to raise your hands, I will call on you per member, and it will be two minutes per member, and like I said, as many rounds as we can. So the first person I see is Ms. Keys-Gamara. So Ms. Keys-Gamara, if you want to go ahead?
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. That was a leftover. I'd prefer to reserve my time to get questions from staff. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Keys-Gamara, let me just clarify. Each member is going to get two minutes to speak, and we're going to do as many rounds of this as we like. If during those two minutes you want to use that to ask staff questions, you are welcome to do that, and that way, staff will answer your questions. We just asked for one staff member to answer only for one minute, so we can focus on board conversation, because that was the primary reason for continuing this dialogue. So you're welcome to use your two minutes to ask staff questions or use your two minutes to share your thoughts with colleagues. Either one. So having said that, I would like to go ahead and start our conversation. Again, a reminder, two minutes. Do not worry. We'll try to get as many rounds in as we can. So go ahead and raise your hands if you'd like to share thoughts, comments, or ask questions. Ms. McLaughlin?
Great, thank you. Hi, Dr. Braybrand. I'd like to maybe start the conversation with the decision that was announced yesterday to the public that we were going to pause on Group 5. That certainly came as a surprise to the Board. You had notified us about 11 o'clock yesterday morning, and then we notified the public around 1:00. So given that the Board had just had a work session last Thursday about our return-to-school plans, and there was no mention at that time that we might pause on Group 5, I think it would be helpful for the Board and the public to understand what transpired between Thursday and yesterday and what, in terms of like the health metrics that your team specifically used to make this decision to pause and what health metrics are going to be driving then your decision, as you stated in the public notification, that nothing before November 30th or maybe later?
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Let me briefly answer that in one minute or less. On Thursday night, we shared our current threshold, current thresholds for decision-making that were based on two of the three CDC core indicators: the percent positivity and the number of cases per 100,000. The third core indicator, mitigation strategies, which is how well we keep COVID transmission at a very, very low or no rate in schools, that we would be continuing to work on that with audit teams going around in schools to make sure we do those mitigation strategies well, but that we were going to bring you more data on that third indicator. Unfortunately, the two indicators that we already shared as our current thresholds for decision-making went up significantly and exceeded thresholds for returning Group 5. And that's why we pressed pause. The threshold was 200 cases per 100,000, and we went over 200 on Monday, and we're over 200 again today, even higher than Monday.
Okay, Dr. Braybrand, I just want to drill down a little deeper, and maybe someone on your team can speak to this. What we do know with COVID-reported cases is that everything is dependent upon laboratories. So by any given day, things will vary. So the way that these metrics are supposed to work is typically a seven-day average or a 14-day average. So my question of why I asked it was, while I'm cognizant one day we might see a spike, last Thursday to Monday was not a seven-day average. So we can't, as a school division, have our metrics varying day by day? So what's happening here from last Thursday to Monday that's triggering those CDC, those two CDC indicators?
So Dr. Boyd, I think, can share with you Slide 15 that we shared Thursday night and go over our decision-making approach. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, good afternoon. In our decision-making approach, because we know the data will fluctuate as we begin to start groups to bring them back in, our expectation, as outlined in our threshold, is that they would be within the established threshold for both the number of cases and percent positivity for seven consecutive days prior to starting. Once a group is in, again, we understand that those data points can fluctuate. And so as the data fluctuates, a group could remain in so long as they do not exceed the number of cases or the percent positivity for seven consecutive days. So that allows for some variance, as you stated, that the metrics may go up and may go down. And so we're looking at that trend data with the seven consecutive days to start a group or seven consecutive days exceeding the threshold to pause a group and transition that group back to distance learning.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. So what happened is you're saying the seven consecutive days didn't...
Corbett, would you like to go back? Next round, your time was up.
Yes, that would be great. I would like to go back to get my questions answered.
Well, you can save them for the next round. Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any other hands up right now, unless my screen is not refreshed. Ms. Cohen, I see your hand up. Followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Hi, yes, thank you. A few questions. The key piece that, you know, the CDC has mentioned is, it says in here, "The first two core indicators of disease transmission are intended to be combined with the third core indicator, a school's self-assessed measure of their ability to implement five key mitigation strategies." And in fact, it says that you can have higher transmission rates if you're really tight on those mitigation strategies or you have to have lower if you can't be tight. So I know you have a plan for that. So can you elaborate that for us?
Sure. I believe Jeff Plattenberg is here. We have audit teams that are going to be going into our schools. And Mr. Plattenberg, would you like to talk a little bit about those audit teams that are actually in our schools today?
Yeah, basically, thank you, Dr. Braybrand. And that's a very good question, and I know a lot of people are concerned about it. We have individual, since I only have a minute, I'll try to be as quick as I can. We have individuals who actually have experience in monitoring our schools, and what we've done is we've gone ahead and provided them with the metrics that the Board had had at the previous school board meeting for them to go ahead and review at each of the individual schools. And we will be compiling that information, you know, the proper mask-wearing, proper sanitation, proper social distancing, and providing that to the school board in a report out, working with the lady in the office of research to make sure something that, what is provided will be something that school board can look at. Also looked in other school divisions, asked what they were doing. Prince Wim has a risk management group, but they don't have a form of reporting process like we're standing up. And then Arlington doesn't have anything. So it is something that we feel is a focus. Thank you.
Will buses also be part of the audit team?
They currently are not part of the audit team. You know, certainly, it's something that we could modify. If you take a look at that form, it really doesn't go into that. But certainly, we are going to, this will be an evolving process. So any recommendations along those lines, certainly working with Michelle's group, we'll be happy to go ahead and take into consideration. Absolutely.
I would think our bus drivers would be super happy to report if they're not seeing mask compliance. My next question is, Dr. Gloria, in our summer work sessions this year, promised that there would be a dedicated testing site for FCPS employees, at least. I didn't, I don't remember if we talked about families as well, but we did talk about employees. Do you have an update on that?
Dr. Boyd or Ms. Skirbski? Do you want to share anything that we have from the Health Department around that?
Good afternoon. I will defer to Lorraine Chauvin for any updates regarding that testing site.
Lorraine?
Yes, hi. I'm sorry, I was having a little audio problem. Can you please repeat the question for me? I'm not able to hear you.
I believe the question about dedicated testing sites for our schools, whether we're able to have dedicated testing sites, at least for our staff?
Okay, at this point in time, there are no updates from the Health Department regarding dedicated school sites, testing sites for our staff. Throughout the community, we do have, the Health Department does have testing sites for the community. They are located on the Health Department website. They also do change from area to area depending on whether or not there are hotspots. And that, right now, is the status of the testing sites within FCPS in terms of the Health Department collaboration.
I'm just, I'm hearing anecdotally that I know there's a caravan that's going around that we had at Braddock Elementary this weekend. And I've heard other places in the community that they would like that caravan to come. It's a mobile testing unit, but that there hasn't been a collaboration, like with our schools. And so I wondered if we can just ensure that we can support that and make sure that at each region that we're able to offer a lot of opportunities for that caravan, particularly on the weekends. I know when we don't have kids there and we're able to utilize the parking lot.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. The Health Department is actually choosing the site based on the zip code and the amount of COVID cases, but I will certainly communicate the desire to have those increased and take place on the weekend. Thank you.
Sure, thanks. You know, I would just echo that access to better testing was definitely a big piece of the Board's support for your plan going forward to make sure that we're actually getting numbers that are reflective of where we are and make sure that all of our staff members have super quick access to rapid testing so that there's not this delay. I'm not putting that on you in any way possible, but we got to firm that up with the Health Department, and if the Board can help be better advocates to push for that, I think that is hugely important in our piece of having accurate reporting and a timely communication with our families. The last thing I would just ask, and this is more to Dr. Boyd, is I see in our health plan, we've taken one metric, which is the up to 8% from the moderate category, and then the over 200 is from the higher-risk category. So I just wondered how we chose, instead of sort of staying in that yellow line there, what made us choose, like kind of pick and choose from different categories?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Cohen. Again, those, the moderate and the higher-risk thresholds, the yellow and the orange that are associated with Phase 2, we selected to be a little bit more conservative within that established realm from the Virginia Phase guidance as we add on more students. So as we look at our numbers for, our anticipated numbers for Groups 5 and Group 6, we're looking at bringing about 6,800 students in for Group 5 and then bringing another 13,000 in for Group 6. So as we stair-step up, we still want to stay within that phase guidance, but understanding that the more bodies we have, more kids constitutes more staff. So we have more likelihood that there could be some things introduced into the school building, but still remaining in alignment with Virginia's Phase guidance. So if you look at that, I believe at the slide, Slide 14, the Phase 2 guidance is associated with moderate risk and higher risk.
All right, under the bell. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Next, we have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Great, and I'm really glad to follow, Ms. Cohen, because my questions kind of follow up on the collaboration and the importance of coordinating with the Health Department. So I have a couple of questions. One, did we speak to the Health Department? Did we coordinate with them before our announcement was made yesterday? And the second piece, which is really to the crux of this restoring trust with the community and with our staff about the metrics and how the mitigating processes are being put in place and the audit, I think is a brilliant idea, but do we have people from the Health Department that are participating in that audit function? And then the third piece is, we had heard about our bus drivers, I'm glad Ms. Cohen mentioned it, and that they might not be doing thermometer checks anymore because there's, because of availability of thermometers. So if somebody could address that as well.
Jeff and Michelle? That's a twofer. That's probably what we'll have to do. 30 seconds.
You're skirting the line, though, Dr. Braybrand. Really quick.
Go first, and then I'll mention about the temperature taking.
Yes, very quickly. We did discuss our mitigation, excuse me, our phase and approach with the Health Department, and the Health Department really reiterated the importance of those mitigation measures, because they said that can drastically pull down our risk in schools. But they understood that in our interim process that we didn't have that process fully stood up. So they were aware of what our thresholds were. We do communicate with them on an ongoing basis, and we did share with them and get their feedback on our plan. And they're looking forward to our being able to incorporate the weight of those mitigation measures for risk in schools. And the Health Department, we did reach out to them to ask that they provide some, just some technical assistance source and understanding those mitigation measures. I hand it over to Jeff.
Are they going to be part of your audit teams? Because I know that 200 staff available to help. And then the second piece is, did we talk to them yesterday just to kind of coordinate how we were going to communicate out your decision?
As of this time, they are not established to serve as auditors. As we're experiencing some staff challenges, so is the Health Department, and so we're trying to actually partner with them to support the availability of PHNs in our school with some childcare options. So at this time, that is not on the table. I guess I'll have to move back. Am I able to continue?
You can finish. Roger, you have to...
I know this is hard, but the main reason we were here was to have board-to-board conversations. So I, go ahead and finish, Dr. Boyd.
Yes, just very quickly. We communicated and informed them of our need to close, but we did not seek their consultation prior to closing, because we had already shared with them our plan and our process for dialing up and dialing down.
Mr. Plattenberg, just briefly, if you can address the bus issue?
Yeah, so we put, we went in and put that in place. We said we'd do it as long as we possibly could. The staffing element, when we were phasing the next group, we basically had a number of students, and we needed those people who were drivers that were working as attendants on buses doing it, to drive their routes. So it really was something we were phasing out. And I keep in mind, we were still doing the temperature checking at the actual local school, but in terms of, before people boarding the bus, we were phasing that out due to staffing, really.
Thank you. So to go back to my colleagues, I would just ask that we would really focus on making sure that we had that collaboration and coordination with the county utilizing their health resources. And if we can kind of figure out what we're going to do to best support our bus drivers, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mullberg, that was, was that Ms. Corbett Sanders' time?
No, she still had about 25 seconds.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, are you finished right now? Would you like to...
I'll reserve the 25 seconds for later in the afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, a couple of things. I wanted to go back to the mitigation measures and the auditing of that. I just want to say again, I keep saying we cannot skip on PPE and that all those items must be centrally distributed. So I'm wondering if we could provide the audit team even with an order sheet or something for PPE so that if they notice any kind of issues when they're auditing a school to see that they don't have whatever, gloves, gowns, whatever they need to have, that they could immediately order that and get that to the school as soon as possible? I just wanted to make a comment based on an earlier question that I think our audits should be done from the time that, you know, any of our students are interfacing with the school district all the way through, you know, to when they leave us. So I would definitely think it would be a good idea to start with, you know, when they're getting on the bus, riding the bus, you know, entering school, you know, until they get, you know, back home, picked up by a parent, whatever. So I put that out there as a comment. So I don't know if Jeff wants to make any comments about any of that?
No, I mean, we certainly could. The way the audits are set up is that they would be performing them in the morning to make sure that the temperature taken was at the school, doing, following within the school. And then their comeback on the other time that they would come back, they would be looking in the afternoons to make sure that that continuity and the quality controls are in place, trying to figure out how to go ahead and incorporate the transportation. We'll go ahead and see what we can do to go ahead and accomplish something along those lines.
Yeah, and then maybe we can let us know, too, about the ordering, the materials. I wanted to just go back to the train of thought that Megan had. I think it was very confusing yesterday in my conversations with principals and what exactly, you know, when we see, we saw the 211, you know, as than our cases yesterday, that was a one-day thing. So we paused having new groups come in. I would like us to run through that thought process of when do we need seven days? When do we not need seven days? And we need to make sure that's really clear to the public. And as we talked on Thursday, we need to figure out how we can stand up something like the core indicators that we're showing on Slide 9 in that presentation on our website so it's very, very clear to the public how we're making these decisions. So anyway, so Dr. Boyd or Dr. Braybrand, if you can just run us through that, how many days for which types of decision?
Yeah, Dr. Boyd, do we have Ms. Mullberg, the presentation from Thursday? And Dr. Boyd could go to Slide 15 and go over that, and the public could see it again as part of the work session?
Yes, it would take us a minute, though. So don't hold. Don't wait for us.
All right.
Okay, we'll come back.
We won't, we, oh, well, look at that. That's quick.
That was this video for the record.
Thanks, Bev. Dr. Boyd, do you want to go over this again as you did on Thursday?
Sure, and if I may answer the first question that was, the last question was answered. We do, we do now have the information, the data, metrics that are shown on Slide now, 9, that is available on the FCPS website along with the decision-making process, and it's updated daily. So this is currently located on our website now.
Fantastic.
As we go back to Slide 15 and looking, talking about our decision-making process, there are a couple of different metrics. In order for a group to start, we must have seven consecutive days within that threshold, seven consecutive days in order for us to start a group. Once a group is in, there's able to be some fluctuation above the established threshold. But the established threshold cannot be exceeded for either the number of cases or the percent positivity for seven consecutive days. So Group 4, right now, if we look at Group 4 who's currently in, their threshold is less than or equal to 200 cases per 100,000. We exceeded that metric on yesterday, and we exceeded it today. But we don't have seven consecutive days. If they should hit seven consecutive days above the 200 threshold for the number of cases, that group will be transitioned to distance learning based on our current interim process.
Thank you.
Ms. Tolan, do you have any more questions?
No, I think my time's up.
Oh, sorry, thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Frisch, you're up next.
Thank you. Just in, you know, my assessment of the slides we just saw is that we keep saying that we are following the CDC's guidance. But I think we're misinterpreting the CDC's guidance. I think Ms. Cohen read a bit from the CDC indicating that we can't take any one metric in isolation. in isolation. And, you know, I think this is what Ms. Darren Kowacs has been getting at too, with the need for a very clear way of articulating what we're looking for for dialing in, dialing out. Just as an example, you look at New York City where they will tolerate a 3% positivity. That's not in isolation. The reason that their number is 3% is because of their mitigation strategies. And it is impacted by the, the, the volume per 100,000 of infections. So our numbers are no different, right? You look at the, the slides as presented, and it is like we are sticking them as fossils stuck in a rock and that they don't change or that they don't impact each other, and they do. We're not supposed to look at them all three and say, well, we'll take it into consideration, each one as an individual stance. No, they impact each other. So if you have a, a wonderful mitigation strategy and an implemented mitigation strategy, you might be able to accommodate a larger percent positivity. But those numbers impact each other. And that's the message that is not coming across. And that's the crux of the conversation we were having about the jump from 5 to 10%. What is that based on? What's the science? What number is indicating that it is now safer to have twice as high a number of percent positivity? Can y'all speak to that, that question of how these numbers impact each other, not using them in isolation for any decision-making?
Dr. Boyd, do you want to take a shot? And then I might make a couple of comments.
Mr. Frisch, you're exactly correct. The current process that we just described and reviewed is our current interim process because we haven't fully stood up our audit teams to be able to speak with confidence about our mitigation measures. If you look on Slide 16, that's where we talk about our future process. Once we fully stand up our, our audit teams, we will be taken into consideration again based on what the CDC has indicated, our metrics for the number of cases per 100,000, our percent positivity in our implementation measures. And so when we have that both stood up, instead of the numbers here, you'll actually see our actual daily data. So today, our number of cases is 222.7. You would see that in the number of cases column. And the percent positivity, you would see 7.4 based on our data today. And then whatever our metric is determined from lower risk to highest risk based on our mitigation measures. And those three data points together will become the last column, which is risk pools, which may indeed allow us to have groups in with higher community transmission represented by cases and percent positivity as a result of strong mitigation measures.
Mr. Frisch, I believe you still have time left.
Oh, okay, good. The, the second thing I wanted to get out there is the notion that we might treat this like snow days, right? We do a much better job of communicating to the public through all of our various channels when we have snow that is keeping us from functioning than we have around dialing in or dialing out. I think we should change that pronto. The other thing I would say is that those messages should be written in advance. It's not complicated. And we could have saved valuable time if these messages had been written in advance.
Thanks for that feedback. I'll share it with our OCCR team, Mr. Frisch. Thank you.
I have Ms. Darren Kowacs.
Thank you, Raj, Ms. Seismarheiser. And thank you, Mr. Frisch, for talking about. Look, I, I, I sound like a broken record, but I have to say it again. You know, Ms. Boyd, Dr. Boyd, I know you find yourself in this situation brand-new. You and I had spoken briefly, and I appreciate where we are. I still guess I, the fact that it takes about three to four minutes to explain our mitigation factor, our, our dial-in and dial-out, the fact that we need charts a page long, it is, it is not the same as saying, you know, when we get to this percentage of positivity rate, because our mitigation factors, yes, are, are, are on point. So maybe that is a place we can strive to, Dr. Braybrand, because right now it is still much too complicated for me to even explain to my next-door neighbor when we dial in or dial out, because it is, it takes a chart and it takes graphs, color-coded graphs, and it is not easy. This goes to Mr. Plattenberg. The temperature checks situation, we don't have enough aides, you're saying, to take it on the bus. That concerns me because that then does not have holistic mitigation practice because it could be transferred on a bus if, you know, we are, we don't have somebody there. And, and I get that we're doing it at the, at the school, but the damage could be done if their bus ride is long. So please explain to me, is there any way we can add aides to make sure the mitigation is, strategies are, and the audit will take place throughout the thing? And I'm also hearing from some bus drivers that when the cold weather is like on a day like today, the thermal thermometers are not working because it's too cold outside. Have you heard any of that?
Oh, yeah. Oops. Can I, do I speak or is that?
Yeah, do you have a minute, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Darren Kowacs. Bottom line is, we are doing temperature checks on our students with special needs buses because they do have attendance on those buses. We had, when we stood up, the general ad as an extension of the Supporting Return to School, the county program, having our drivers working, I writing as attendants on our general education buses. Simply put, we need those drivers with their CDL licenses now as we phase in Group 5. We do not have staff that are sitting available to go ahead and then perform those duties. As you, I mean, you know, the, the CDC comment about the thermometers and the whole temperature thing and all that are very real. And, and so I, I think that answered, at least hopefully that answered most of the questions that I'm, I feel like I'm trying to beat the clock, so I.
Did you hear though that the temperature, the clock, the temperatures, the thermometers are not working? Have you heard that? I've heard that from a couple of bus drivers.
I've heard that the narrative on it is that they won't work if there's a certain temperature. I have not heard that they are not working. But, but again, you know, we are phasing that out on the general education bus drivers. But we did look at some alternative options in the event that that would occur. I don't have that right now, and I can follow up with you with something, Ryan.
Thank you.
Say something.
If Ms. Darren Kowacs, unless there's something really to add to that, I'd like to move on just so we have more time for board dialogue since that was sort of the main purpose of this, of this one, Dr. Braybrand.
You didn't answer my question. I had a question.
If I could back on the simplicity, it's how simple we want to make it, but we're trying to follow the CDC thresholds for closing and opening schools. Those thresholds just came out a month ago. We didn't have them in the summer. In the summer, the World Health Organization talked about reopening countries and businesses. It talked about 5%. It wasn't talking about percent positivity in relation to reopening schools. So even in New York right now, New York City has a 3% threshold, but the governor says it can be 9%. So even picking one indicator, there's still debate about whether that's the right number. So I don't know whether, I, I think it's more about explaining how we're making the decision more than whether it's three numbers or one number or a combination. We're relying on the CDC's specific guide for opening and closing schools. We have two pieces clear as day to show you. And the third one, just like Michelle said, we're going, or Jeff said, we're going above and beyond. We're going to measure schools and tell you how effective it is, and we'll have the case data and the audit data to share and build the confidence that we need for our staff and community.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Ms. Darren Kowacs, I can put you on a go-back list if you like. Ms. Keyskamara?
Yes, forgive me for turning on my camera and showing I have a poor connection. I am very concerned about how our employees are perceiving our ability to, or our focus on protecting them in our schools. And just anecdotally, I've received letters of communication where we have a positivity, one positivity rate for some groups, but a different rate for other groups. And so is, can I get an explanation as to how an employee might interpret that to, so that they can feel that they are being protected even though we have, we are applying somewhere between 8 and 10%, depending on which group we're talking about?
Dr. Boyd, do you want to answer that? And I think it's about the students that they serve and the, and the CDC guidance and VDH guidance for the students that we're serving. Dr. Boyd?
What Dr. Braybrand just shared, again, if, if staff are looking at the threshold specifically for Groups 4 and 5, again, both of those groups are aligned with our Phase 2 guidance. But again, as we add more schools, we're adding more opportunities for that, for community transmission from the community to come into our schools. And so again, being more conservative, if there was a desire, both of those percentages could be at the higher level. But again, we were erring on the side of caution within the phase guidance based on the increased number of students in the building. So, you know, we can certainly communicate to staff that it's not a, you know, we care about all of our staff and all of our students, and that's why we truly are trying to do diligence about standing up those audit teams and communicating the decision-making process to you, but also to our other stakeholders.
So I would ask if we might consider having one positivity rate or a significant communications plan to get people to understand what the differences are? Because I do think that that is being received in a negative light, and it's certainly not helpful, I think, overall. The next question I would like to go to is our audit teams, which I think are focused primarily on the implementation of our PPE and safety measures. Is that correct?
That's correct. All the five mitigation strategies.
So Dr. Braybrand, as we are in this, I'm going to just kind of pivot a little bit. As we are in this time period where we are trying to, kind of teetering between distance learning and trying to bring people back in, are, have you considered having either these audits or something like it to try to monitor how we are dealing with difficulties even within, you know, whether it's caused by distance learning, whether it's caused by the concurrent learning model? So that we are monitoring that and able to pivot to improve?
Ms. Keyskamara, can you ask me that question one more time so I, I answer it accurately and comprehensively?
Okay. I assume I can go after the bell because you asked me to.
Yeah, you can restate your question.
Okay. So basically, we've got these audit teams to look at our compliance and our mitigation, which I think is absolutely necessary. But we've also had issues or concerns raised by a number of constituents, say, for example, students that aren't thriving in the virtual environment, or difficulties, concerns about how concurrent is working. I'm wondering how are we gathering those types of concerns so that we can always focus on continuous improvement irrespective of what we have to deal with as a result of COVID?
Now, thank you. Very good. We're taking a lot of feedback from our pilots, and Mark Greenfelder is coordinating that. And we're using that in our leadership team meetings and our meetings with our principals to continue to troubleshoot. We have a stand-up meeting of the leadership team every day to problem solve. We are looking at the groups, Ms. Keyskamara. We're finalizing all the data on our first quarter grades and looking at identifying those schools and those, excuse me, those students at every school that are struggling and looking at what additional interventions we can do for them. And I can provide an update around that in a future return-to-school meeting. And Dr. Presidio may have a couple of comments on that. Dr. Presidio?
Yeah, just real briefly, in addition to those actions, our Office of Research and Strategic Improvement is also continuing to monitor and do surveys of stakeholder groups about how student learning is progressing and additional supports that teachers may need. So we actually have quite a bit of information that we will be able to provide the board pretty, pretty soon.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, I think my time is up. I'll use the go-back.
All right, I'll put you down for a go-back, Ms. Keyskamara. Right now, I don't have any other hands up who are not needing a go, who have not taken their first turn yet. So I'll give one more chance for any of my colleagues who have not yet spoken to put their hands up. If not, I will take my turn, and then we can go to go-backs. So I do not see any hands up yet of colleagues. Oh, Ms. Omeish, I just saw your hand up. So Ms. Omeish, please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I was just going to build on what Ms. Keyskamara mentioned. I think this is, you know, earlier conversations we've been having about how we weigh these decisions. I mean, it, it, again, it's always a trade-off, right? And we want to make sure we're keeping our kids safe while understanding what level of urgency exists for them to go back. So rather than it being a feeling, it's an intuition, someone's own experience in, you know, addressing how, how urgent it is, it's extremely important that, I'll, I'll bring it back again, and I, I guess I'm also going to risk being a broken record, but those student success metrics, if we look at, you know, now we have first quarter, right? So we can look at how kids did, how they didn't do, what attendance looked like across the, the division, and especially for those subgroups that we're aware are particularly at risk and we're, you know, especially concerned about. That is extremely important because if 100% of kids are doing fully well all the time, which I know is not the case, but then there's, then the risk that is worth it is zero, right? But as we consider, okay, we've got 50% of kids that are failing, which I don't expect to be the case, but in that case, it's like, oh, my God, we've got to hit the top metric on the health stuff, right? We've got to take the, the maximum risk within healthy, reasonable means to go back. So I, I just, again, I really emphasize the importance of this piece, not just to present like data on it, but really to evaluate it as a core component in our decision-making. Because those are the pieces I, I look at, right? There's the health side and, and the students, I mean, which is our entire objective of our system. So, and, and there's the mental health wellness component to that too, which I don't want to miss. But I, I just put that out there again, because I, I don't know that I've flushed it out in a way that's been understood clearly in, in how we make these decisions or what's presented to us. But I, I see my time. The bell is coming. Moving on to that.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Would you like a go-back?
I'll see where the conversation goes. Thank you.
Great, thank. One more chance, if there's a couple of colleagues have not yet spoken, if you want to speak now, go ahead, unless I'll take my turn, and we can start our next round. I do want to thank staff for trying to keep this as succinct as possible so we can focus on board dialogue. I appreciate that effort. I know that is hard. So seeing no more hands up, I will take my turn. And I just wanted to clarify, Dr. Braybrand and, and Dr. Boyd, before you can answer, the reason we didn't have some of these metrics in the summer, I've heard from a lot of constituents saying, how come we didn't phase in earlier if these are the metrics? Because we met these metrics earlier. Some of the challenges were around the fact that some of these metrics are newer, especially the CDC metrics, to help guide our decision-making. And so while other states may be using 5% or 3%, we've been really waiting for this sort of succinct guidelines, as well as maybe learning lessons, which is what our intent was, to go slow, was to learn lessons from what other school systems are doing and seeing that there aren't huge outbreaks from what I've read, you know, related to schools, and also getting a better understanding of mitigation measures. Is that kind of how we got to here now as opposed to earlier? If one of you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
The CDC guidance for schools to make decisions about in-person learning came on September 15th, not July, not August, not before school started, after our own school started virtually. So some of the tools that we had begged for as superintendents to have, we've gotten from the CDC late. I think that is part of the impact. I will also say, we paused yesterday, as did Henrico, another large school system in the Commonwealth of Virginia, as did Virginia Beach. So we are all looking at the metrics, we're looking at these thresholds, and we're trying to do our very best. What we want to bring you and will bring you is that third, that third leg of the stool around our mitigation strategies and show, and we need to show this board and the community that even if COVID goes higher in our community, it can remain low in our schools and not only keep the groups that we have in, but add additional groups so that we can turn to school.
Thank you. And I think that's really key. You know, we, we did go slow so we could learn from other schools, and we're learning the importance of mitigation measures and metrics, right? And looking at community spread versus school spread and trying to figure out that right balance. I'm also glad to follow along behind Ms. Omeish and her mentioning of student success metrics, because one of the, the metrics that's concerned me around mental health, which I know I've talked about a lot, is that according to the CDC, ER visits around mental health for ages 5 to 11 went up 24% from last year at this time to this year. 12 to 17 went up 31%. So if we're looking at metrics and health, we do need to look at that. So I think it's important, we obviously have to make sure we do everything we can to keep community spread low within our schools. But I think it's important to have the right metrics to find that balance for student success and student well-being, as well as all of our safety and health. So I've just put that out there, that now that we have a better understanding in metrics, I think it's really important to balance all of the needs that we have and as well as knowing this is going to go on for a while. You know, I would love to hear more about data around the number of Fs that we had in the first quarter, because I know we've been collecting data around that. I don't know if we have anything to share today on that.
Dr. Presidio, I don't know if we have the data yet. It can certainly be part of our, our next RTS formal work session. Friday's BB, I'll have it in Friday BB. Dr. Presidio?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay, great. Before I go to go-backs, I do see Dr. Anderson has her hand up, and she has not yet spoken, so I'll let her take her turn. And then if Ms. Bukarski doesn't want to speak, we'll go to go backs.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Very quickly, Dr. Bray Brand, if a few or someone from your team can speak to the impact of the pause to the phase in groups. This is a question that has been posed probably of me and probably all of us in the last couple of days since, since your announcement. Can you please speak to the impact on the phasing in? Just so the public is very clear in terms of what this means and what the impact will be in the incoming groups.
So to begin to phase in additional groups, we need to have those numbers come back under the thresholds that we already shared. And we're going to continue to watch. Unfortunately, since we made the announcement, the positivity rate and the percent of cases per 100,000, the number of cases per 100,000 have gone up. We're going to continue to track it. When they get below thresholds, we're going to begin to move additional groups in. The other part is we're going to bring you the audit data. And if we can make and share with you how well we're doing in schools to mitigate COVID, we can resume adding our groups in, but we need to give you that information so that you, our staff and our community have the confidence that we can continue to bring additional kids in school and bring them in safely.
Thank you. Another question that I'm getting a lot from our community is what is our plan with sports at this point?
Virginia High School League is, has been authorized by the governor to play winter sports and it is our intention to participate with Virginia High School League in winter sports, which start in December. So it's just around the corner. We have all of the work with the VHSL that we've done. And Bill Curran is here, Mark Greenfelder is here to speak to it, but we are prepared to begin our winter season under the VHSL guidelines.
I'm so sorry. I just wanted to confirm, what impact would our thresholds have on student participation in those sports? Are we the driver or is it VSHL that's the driver?
Unless VHSL decides to cancel sports for the state, we would be the driver. And the thresholds we shared with you were around our in-person learning. That does not have to impact our athletics unless, you know, there would be direction to do so. We would continue to work with the Virginia High School League. There are a few school districts that have decided they are not going to participate. That's not my recommendation to this board. My recommendation is that we participate in the VHSL program for the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And my last question, this actually just came to us where a constituent wants to know regarding the time of day that the statistics are checked and that the website is updated to show the transmission numbers. Is that information that we have?
Yeah, we know that, I believe. Dr. Boyd might be able to answer that to the hour.
Yes, good morning. So there, we, the VDH website regularly, the page that specifically lists the CDC indicators, VDH shared that that's updated back 10. Other locations on the website may have the information slightly before around nine. But we like to just make sure we have that verification on the CDC page, which is updated no later than 10 daily.
Thank you.
Dr. Anderson, are you finished? I don't believe your time was up.
I am for right now. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Bukarski, I know is having some connection issues, but she said she would like to speak. So I'm going to call on her next, then we'll go to go backs. She's the last person to, well, Ms. Marin also, but we'll start with Ms. Bukarski.
Thank you, Ms. Seizmohizer. I do apologize. I'm keeping my camera off and I've been very intermittent throughout this meeting. So if these have been asked, I do apologize. First of all, I've had some questions regarding the leave of absences that staff had to take that made a difficult decision to take without really having the opportunity to look at this district's health metrics. And now I'm getting emails from staff understandably asking, we've paused, we're on hold, what does this mean for me? If my kids are virtual, can I continue teaching them? Can somebody speak to that?
Mr. McDonald?
Sure. Good afternoon. So for individuals in group five, we are going to be contacting the schools and as well as the employees around our ability to facilitate keeping them engaged. Ultimately, we want to keep folks engaged as long as we possibly can. So we're working on reaching out as we speak and working through that.
Thank you. And I hope that is a priority because we know that our, our staff, our teachers and the relationships they've built are so important to the success of our kids. And I thank you for that answer. I would also like to know what processes have been put in place to garner feedback directly from staff on the ground in classrooms? What are they seeing? How are they feeling? What is their access to PPE, which we continually keep hearing issues with and just cannot understand why that continues to be a problem or a disconnect. So if you could speak to processes put in place, I would appreciate that.
Dr. Presidio, do you want to talk about the ORC survey as it relates to staff?
So we do have a number of questions on the survey related to staff feelings of readiness, supplies, time, preparation, support. So we do have a number of those items on those surveys that are going to be asked multiple times a year and that have already been asked and collected. And again, will be provided to the board very shortly.
On the issue of PPE, Ms. Bukarski, we're starting those audits today. We are going to immediately intervene in schools where we do not find adequate PPE. We have provided it, distributed it, and if it is not being distributed and implemented in schools, we're going to follow up through the audit process and take the corrective action necessary.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I know we are very eager to get that information from the audit teams. I also, in thinking about this, I know our staff would be thankful for more informal ways to give that feedback immediately and not just through surveys. So if that's something that is considered, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, we absolutely could. And by the way, we have a few principals with us today. And one of the things I would just encourage staff is to be sure they've checked with their school principal about PPE needs, because our principals are committed to giving our staff what they need to be successful and to be safe.
Thank you. Ms. Bukarski, I think your time was up.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
So Ms. Marin, did you want to take a turn before we go to go backs?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, my colleagues have asked a lot of questions. I've also been hearing from the community, including bus protocols and the temperature taking. Also, I've heard from people, from staff that they don't have the PPE they need. And I did talk with Mr. Plattenberg last week and, you know, it seems like sometimes, I don't know if the communication line is breaking down. So I've encouraged people to directly, you know, contact their principal, contact me. So I hope that we can clarify that. I don't know if it's an issue of not being available or staff not feeling like they can ask or if schools feel like they're needing to conserve, but I am still hearing these stories about this. I think that communicating to the public too about, you know, clarifying about the bus and the temperature taking, that's come up as a big point of confusion the last few days. But I have to say, I, with the pause for today, which really made me sad last night, although I know it was necessary. You know, just the emotions of it. And when you have a young kid and you're getting them all excited for school, then you have to dash the hopes. And for staff too, I've heard from staff who were really excited about returning today. Let's be honest, what is the leadership team thinking about bringing any groups back at all this calendar year? Given that next week is a two day week, we've got December and the holiday, you know, what's it really looking like? What are you thinking?
Well, we're still actively studying the health metrics and we will have auditor audit data in just another week or two. We still are looking at dates in December, especially to get group five in if we can. As far as the other groups, group six was the only other one that we were looking at prior to winter break. And I'm not in a place today to make a decision or provide a recommendation for group six. And again, group seven and eight were after the winter break. The rise in the numbers is of concern. We're monitoring it. But if we can show through our audit data and our COVID cases in schools, low transmission, we would like to continue with our return to school process. We need to bring you the data so you, the community and the staff can see our effectiveness at those mitigation strategies. So I'm not ready to rule out returning some groups prior to winter break, but I can't say today 100% that that's going to happen.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not advocating to go either way just yet. I just know that the emotional toll of having to prep and cancel and everyone has already taken its toll. So just please let's be. I know you are, but.
No, absolutely.
It's happening.
Absolutely. And I know it's having a toll. One thing we did make a decision on yesterday. We're not, we're not bringing anybody back prior to November 30th. So folks who are about to go away and visit folks for Thanksgiving, we're not bringing any additional groups in between now and November 30th.
Okay. And I think I have a few seconds left. I do want to say, you know, I hope that the public does their part in mitigating contact. Because we can't expect our schools to be the main defenders if people are going to go off and travel. You know, we're already doing so much. And so when people ask me, well, what about the holidays? And I say, well, everyone's got to take responsibility for being safe and not put everyone at risk. So that is my plea to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. So since everyone has had a chance to do the first round, I want to first thank staff for being succinct. And now you know how it feels to have the bell go off, as the board members have been doing. So I appreciate your work so the board members can really speak. We will go to go backs and it'll be the same rules again. Two minutes for board members. Again, you can use your time for your own comments, sharing thoughts, answering staff questions. I'd like staff to, if possible, again, as much as possible, one person respond to a minute. Obviously, if we need more, we can work on that. But I appreciate you getting through this many board members in this amount of time. So having said that, I will start with Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders. And again, two minutes with one minute response.
Thank you. I wanted to first ask the question, Dr. Bray Brand, that Ms. Seizmohizer noted. What, if any, school districts has your team studied that opened up by Labor Day to see what their mitigation and transmission rates have been? What if any school districts have you studied and what have you found? And if you haven't studied any, why is that?
Well, we have looked at other districts and studied their work and transmission rates in schools across the Commonwealth overall have been lower than the community transmission rates. I don't know whether Dr. Boyd or Dr. Presidio would want to speak to any more specifics. But if you do a good job with mitigation, you can have lower risk of COVID in schools than what exists in the community. And we have looked at other districts, Loudon, Virginia Beach, among others. I don't know if Dr., I'm violating the rule. So that's, that's my answer to your question. Perhaps Dr. Boyd, Dr. Presidio may have something else.
Yes, we're looking at the health metrics and we're finding that school divisions are varying. Not everyone is using the CDC metrics. For example, Cobb County in Georgia, as of today, they have, their number of cases is 205, their percent positivity is 7.8%. And they do have their elementary and their special education students returning. Even though, again, different states and different localities are using different metrics. Some are using their state metrics, some are using CDC. Also looking at Fulton, Fulton, which is a larger district, 205 cases with a 3.4% positivity. And they phased back their students in pre-K through two and five days. And they, excuse me, pre-K through two, and they increased incrementally, increased the number of days that students are in. As Dr. Bray Brand said, Chesterfield, which is located in Virginia, they had higher cases than we do. And just recently transitioned back to virtual. So we've looked at the various divisions.
I appreciate those answers, Dr. Bray Brand. I don't, I'm going to send it in writing. My question was, what school divisions have been open since September across the nation that you studied to see, to help our community understand that they have been open? They have been able, this has been their experience with the transmission rates and mitigation rates within their schools, so within their community. I'm not debating that the metrics may vary. I've asked this since July when we decided to go 100% virtual. So I'll again, ask it in writing. Real quickly, I do want to follow up on something Ms. Cohen said. Lorraine Trouton, it was my understanding that Dr. Gloria was very clear that they would make their health department laboratories available for quick turnaround testing for our employees. That is exactly what she said in July 21st. Why do we not know the specificity around that right now that it's, it's November 17th? So it's been four months. Why is there a disconnect between your understanding and the counties? Is Ms. Trouton on the call?
I think she's in by phone. Lorraine, are you available to respond to that question from Ms. McLaughlin? We'll get you an update to that. And Ms. McLaughlin or Megan, there is a great study out from Harvard, I believe, that shows overall since school opened, that school transmission rates are much lower than what the community rates are. It does vary though by the school's fidelity of the mitigation strategies. So that is the one caveat. You've got to do the mitigation strategies well, or you'll have outbreaks. And we've seen that vary based on colleges or high schools. We've got to do a good job of it. If we do a good job of it, we can move forward and have low, very low rates of transmission in schools and continue to move forward. And we're going to be spending time, Ms. McLaughlin, at the return to school town hall this Thursday, talking about the mitigation. And I'll work to try to get you as much data prior then and sharing that data with our community here is very, very important. And we do need to share, and you're absolutely right, to help reassure folks that schools can be safe even when we have COVID in our community.
Thank you, Dr. Bray Brand. It really is about bringing the data to the conversation. Understandably, our employees are anxious in a front facing career. And if we don't bring them the data and the research like the Harvard study, then we fail them and then we fail our kids. So as a devil's advocate, I will say that our, our support for return to school county program has been running since September 8th. That has also demonstrated that transmissions in the community can be different from what's happening in a school building setting. And I really do wish we had started sooner because group five would have already been in and wouldn't now be closed out of learning. So we waited too long, fortunately.
Thank you, McLaughlin. I can put you on the next round if you like. Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. I'm going to suggest we have a new, a new way of communicating. We're going to call it the three Cs of COVID. And the three Cs, three Cs of COVID is that we offer clarity in our decision making. So that clarity is available to not only the people within the school system, but the broader community and our partners in the county. That we have confidence, we build confidence in our decision making. And this is where I think, you know, Dr. Bray Brand, this, the mitigation audits is a wonderful tool. And I want to congratulate you, Dr. Boyd, and everybody else about the importance of that, of doing that well and identifying where. that, of doing that well and identifying where, where there are issues in those audits and if we can have a mechanism that if there is a problem, that immediate action is taken for correcting that problem. And as, as Ms. Tolan said, having a ability to immediately order PPE maybe from a laptop or a handheld as you're going through your audit and including the health department in that audit. And then communications. And that's what seems to always, it seems to be our Achilles' heel, heel about how we effectively communicate in a clear manner so that the community understands why, for example, we made a decision earlier this week and what they can expect going forward. And that's where if we can have, you know, a more clear, because I understand it, but it's taken me a couple of times to hear it as to how we decide when we're going to go to the next group of students, bringing them in and what parameters will be in place to determine when we will dial back. And so those three Cs, I think, will be really important. And once again, it's that clarify, it's the clarity, the confidence and the communications that will allow us to build the confidence within the school system and the broader community. So that's my advocacy in making sure that we partner that collaboration with the county and the health department.
Absolutely, Ms. Corbett Sanders. That's brilliant clarity, confidence, communications. I completely agree and we're going to continue to work on that. You know, one little thing I do want to just say is, is we have studies, we have our information, we also have communication that happens outside of FCPS and people turn on their TVs. And, and when people turn on their TVs, there's a lot that concerns people. And it's not always about right here, but it still has people reflect and pause and have concern. And so sometimes, as much as we're, we're sharing our narrative and communicating it, we're also pulling against a, a greater narrative of what's going on in our country, which I think gives everybody pause and concern sometimes.
So if I could make it a four Cs and add that collaboration with our county partners.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I believe our time was up. So Ms. Corbett Sanders, if you want, I can put you back on the go-back list for the next round.
That's mine. I still have 26 seconds from the last one, but I'll save that for.
That's why I was going to ask you if you wanted to take your 26 seconds now or save it for the next round. All right, well, then next, Mr. Frisch. I was not clear if you wanted to go back. I do not see your hand up, so I'm going to assume you do not want to go back right now. But if I'm wrong, please speak up now. I see your hand up now. So Mr. Frisch, would you like to go ahead? I had you down at this point.
Sure. So picking up a little bit where I left off about the way that we're communicating these things, and I appreciate Ms. Corbett Sanders' comments about the Cs. I think ultimately, you know, we've, it was presented that, you know, with mitigation, all of these things are, you know, manageable, and that's true. But we're still not nailing the part about how the percent positivity impacts what's manageable for the cases per 100,000 and vice versa. And that's why it's so important to get clear metrics that are presented to the public in a way that doesn't take, I think we did 14 slides on metrics or 18 slides in metrics last Thursday. And there's not a single person out there who's going to be able to glean from that immediately what they need to take home with it. And to Ms. Marin's point, you know, families need to know what they can expect. So giving in them those metrics and then having the way that that information is, is pushed out to the community, I appreciate that we got the information at roughly 11:00 in the morning and that we were able to turn it around in, in a couple hours. But if that information is written now, and now it has been written, at least for email, we don't lose those, those two hours there. So I hope we can get a commitment from you that, that that's what, that we'll do going, going forward. And as for how these things are weighed against each other, can y'all speak to the impact of percent positivity on what's acceptable for cases per 100,000 and vice versa?
Michelle, do you want to talk about percent positivity a little bit more? Mr. Frisch?
Not in isolation as it relates to cases per 100,000. So, you know, a higher percent positivity could be mitigated by a lower cases per 100,000 and vice versa. So, and that's why it's important not to take these things in isolation. We can't look at mitigation as our savior if the other two numbers are off the charts. We can't look at percent positivity being super low. We have problems with the other two factors as well. But they can be dialed against each other, and that's what we're trying, I'm trying to get at here.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Frisch. So again, you're right, we can't look at things in isolation and both the number of cases per 100,000 and the percent positivity speak to community transmission. And our only indicator that speaks to transmission in our schools is that mitigation measure. And so that's why our, our future process, once we stand up our audit teams, will really be able to reflect our overall risk in schools because no one standalone metric can be the end-all and be-all in our decision-making process. And the CDC has advised us that we either use one or both of the community transmission metrics, cases and percent positivity, along with the mitigation measures to determine our overall risk in schools to inform our decision.
And they've advised that the mitigation strategy would allow us to ignore community transmission?
Mr. Frisch, I think your time was up.
Am I able to respond, Ms. Sizemore-Hyzer?
Go ahead and answer, Ms. Dr. Boyd.
Certainly. So the CDC has indicated that our mitigation measures could allow us to operate in schools. It could actually bring down our risk in schools. We could have high community transmission, but that that could be substantially decreased with effective mitigation measures. And conversely, we could have low community transmission, but if we have poor mitigation measures in our buildings, we could actually have a high risk in our schools.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to sort of do a quick time check. We are at 3:17. We did start half an hour late. We had originally planned on ending at four, so I would make a suggestion that we try to go till 4:30 to get everyone's second rounds of questions in, and then we can see where we're at by then. But we were scheduled to end initially at four o'clock. So having said that, I will go on to the next person on the go-back list after Mr. Frisch was Ms. Darnett Kovacs, followed by Ms. Karen Keys-Gamaro.
Thank you. I, I do want to do two thank yous. I see that the chart with the, with the squares with the staff, student and visitors is now tallying totals, so I appreciate that. And just the current numbers are, you know, 226 that we have cases in our schools. And so that's up from 150 total cases when the report was last week, but I appreciate that. Also, I see that Ms. Caldwell has put together some talking points for us. You, I, I think the talking points are good. I think the information is still, as I said a million times, too complex to easily understand. But I want to go back to one of my original questions, even from the summer. And Dr. Braybrand, this is, this is directed toward you and your relationship with the county and your conversations with Dr. Gloria because a lot of, as I said earlier, a lot of public school systems, as well as a lot of colleges, part of their mitigation strategy has been the testing. We know we've had some of the community vans go in there, but are they working directly with us? When I, I feel like it's catch, just catch can. If a van goes out into my community to do testing, I know sometimes our OCC, our office, puts that out, other times they do not. But specifically, Dr. Braybrand, have you asked Dr. Gloria and her team why, as Ms. McLaughlin pointed out, they had talked about in July, when we were talking about this, is standing up testing? And we do not have that kind of rapid testing for our, our staff currently? And that was supposed to be part of our, our collaborative agreement? That's what I recall as Ms. McLaughlin states.
Yeah, I, I have not had that discussion with Dr. Gloria very recently. We certainly discussed it earlier and we'll get an update. I, I do want you to know, though, Ms. Darnett Kovacs, that Dr. Boyd and Dr. Gloria are now regularly talking. Of course, we have regular talks with the health department almost daily, but Dr. Gloria and Dr. Boyd are, are meeting weekly. I'm meeting weekly with Brian Hill, and we're going to continue the close collaboration we've had. I know the testing remains one of the things you want to see more on, and I don't disagree. And I, I do also want the board to know, I'm beginning to have conversations with our teacher associations. We need to prioritize, and we're starting to talk locally and maybe at the state, we need to prioritize when the vaccination comes, and it is coming, that our teachers need to be at the front of the line. Our educators need to be at the front of the line. And I've had some very, very positive and local discussions with our teacher associations that they also agree that our teachers are essential workers, they need to be prioritized for the vaccination so that we can make returning to school a priority. And I look forward to further dialogue and, and I'll, I'll make a board about it.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Ms. Darnett Kovacs, if we have time, I'll put you down for a go-back, but we'll see where we're at after we finish this round. Ms. Keys-Gamaro? Ms. Keys-Gamaro? Ms. Keys-Gamaro, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. Do you want to try to call me or Ms. Cohen?
Ms. Sizemore-Hyzer, why don't you go to the next person? I'll try to call her and get, get her on a phone call.
All right, that sounds cool. We'll come back to Ms. Keys-Gamaro. I'm sorry. Okay, Ms., we'll go on to Ms. Tolan and then come back to Ms. Keys-Gamaro.
Okay, yes, I wanted to ask about, I went to the website and I was looking at the information and back this idea of when do we stop, when do we start? We're talking about in-person instruction and we have for a group to begin, we have for a group to remain in in-person instruction. And then what will happen for groups to transition all the way back to, you know, distance learning if they've already been in? And I know there may be a number of scenarios, but what, but now we're in a situation where we have a group that has been paused. I understand the holidays, et cetera. It's going to be hard to get them in before November 30th. What do the metrics need to look like as far as, you know, now we're talking about numbers of cases of percent positivity for a group to start up again? Or for a group to start? Do we have to have 70s of, you know, under 200 cases and under, you know, 8%? I don't know if Dr. Boyd can address that and that if we have that kind of information, it would be good to put that on the website as well.
Dr. Boyd can address that. That's slide 15 again, I believe, Dr. Boyd.
Yes, sir. And, and Ms. Tolan, you're absolutely correct. If we're still operating with the current, which is our interim process, it will require seven consecutive days for that particular group. So for example, for group five being seven consecutive days being at or less than 200 cases per 100,000 and less than 8% positivity. So again, that's if we're still operation, operating off of this interim process. But we're working diligently, as Mr. Plattenberg said, to really stand up that audit team so that we can incorporate our mitigation measures and shift to our future process. But we do have both the, the process around the threshold for groups, our process for beginning in-person instruction, remaining in in-person instruction and transitioning back to distance learning. We have made that available on our website with our metrics as well as for stakeholder consumption.
Right, so I see all of that, interesting to see all that on the website, but can we also put on there when the group will go back?
Correct. As we monitor that data, and I think that one of the citizens that sent some communication to us, we could have six days being within that threshold and then that seventh day exceeded, that would make a difference. And so our ability to communicate extremely in advance is somewhat challenged, but we could send out some communications and say thus far, it appears as though we're on track and so long as we remain within the threshold, we'll be adding group five, I'm just making up a date, December 11th, that confirmation for families. Because we know it's important for planning childcare and all of those things.
Okay, great. And just go ahead and leave that slide up for a second. And I'm glad you made that comment because that was one of the things I was going to ask about is if we could give parents a little bit of a warning if we see that things going in a particular trend, can we say, hey, if this goes two more days, we're going to have to shut down, kind of thing? My other question is, on the mitigation measures, where we've got this whole list of TVBs, like what kind of, you know, units are we going to have for that measurement? Is it going to be some, I mean, I'm just making it up, something like, you know, number of correct mitigation measures? Like, how are we going to know, you know, are we exceeding it? Are we needing it? You know, what is, do we have any idea what that's going to look like? I don't know if that's a question for Jeff Plattenberg. If somebody wants to go ahead and answer, then we'll move on to the next speaker.
So the CDC has provided us a thresholds as they did with the other indicators. And so, for example, lowest risk is associated with us implementing all five mitigation measures consistently and correctly. And so they provide descriptors for us. And so we're going to be partnering with ORC to ensure that our survey data and our observation data being used by the audit teams is formulated in a way that we can parallel it with the CDC thresholds.
Okay, so you'll get, I'm sorry, more information to us on what exactly that will look like on this chart, for example?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
And Elaine, this is Dr. Braybrand. Just quickly, we want to get the audit team data to you as quickly as possible because we want to be able to bring this third factor in as soon as we can to help inform our return to school and not just rely on these first two measures. So we will be expediting that, like you heard earlier, the audit teams start this week. We'll have a week's worth of data. Next week, we're really only in school one day. And then we'll have, you know, the week after we get back from Thanksgiving. You know, with the two weeks under our belt, we want to bring you that data and make the case based on that data for either pausing or continuating forward, even if the thresholds still remain above what the threshold, even if the metrics remain higher than we would like them to for the first.
And I really appreciate that. I just think as we're thinking about that, how are we going to interpret that data and show some kind of a measurement that, that people can understand? So that's what I'm saying.
I totally understand. I think everybody wants it simple and we're looking at the health guidance, and the health guidance says it's a little more complex. And that's our challenge is to take complex information and make it as simple as possible for our families, and we'll work to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Tolan, happy to put you on a go-back. I think, do we have Ms. Keys-Gamaro back with us?
Yes, thank you. I was trying to flash my hand so you could see me. I, I do, just following up on Ms. Tolan's comment, the goal, Dr. Braybrand, is to improve that confidence that another colleague spoke about and to simplify it so that people feel that they are being protected. And the variances are creating a lack of confidence, unfortunately, and it's not anybody's fault, but it does make our jobs a little bit harder and I recognize that. So I just want to clarify what we're really dealing with. And simultaneously, I feel that we have to not only keep up with, okay, we're, we've got our audit teams and we're looking at our PPE and we're, you know, trying to make sure we're implementing. and we're, you know, trying to make sure we're implementing mitigating factors, et cetera. But we also have to be ready to have this back and forth between virtual and in-person. And those students that are having difficulty, where we're getting emails about an overabundance of Ds and Fs, we have got to get reports on both fronts from a representative group of people. I will have to say, I was a little bit disappointed in the last presentation where we, you know, we had some wonderful principals come forward about their experience in the pilot. But we didn't have representation across the county from various regions or student groups or age of employees. And as we know, that again, these different groups may express different needs. And so I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that and that we're listening because I don't recall there being anyone from the Route 1 corridor. I don't recall there being a special education person. I don't recall there being, you know, someone over 55. Well, I don't know. I'm not going to guess people's age, but you get my point.
Right, I do, I do.
So I'm very concerned about that, the parallel, the two things. One, we're monitoring that implementation. But also, how are we keeping up with these students who are not doing well with virtual so that we can make sure we build a better bridge for them?
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Next, we'll have Ms. Omechka.
Thank you. Happy to follow that. I was going to say, you know, seeing how quickly we ended up having to pause, I am very, I mean, a red flag, you know, is in my face about the fidelity of the implementation, right? So double, triple layering, what we do to make sure that it's not just our kind of central office expectation, but that it trickles down to everyone. But I'll pause. I won't speak further, given that you guys are going to come back to us with what the auditors say and the analysis and reflection on that. I want to go back to something that we actually had talked about way early, even starting in the summer. And that's the idea of the cohorts, segmenting regionally. What thought are we giving to those possibilities? Given that our county is huge, things look very different depending on where you are. I certainly don't want to facilitate inequity, but that's one consideration, the geographical piece. And the second is our students who are struggling most. So part of the problem with the numbers, right, is the volume. You're sending everyone back. It's a massive operation. I mean, I know in small cohorts, you know, grades and things like that. But if we think about the students who are really, you know, we've lost touch, the attendance rates are really bad. If we have metrics or, I won't use that word, actually, it's overused now, but some threshold for which students we may consider allowing back. You know, if in small cohorts, the kids who are getting straight Fs, straight Ds, can you please speak to some thinking around that? Because if we can't, you know, if we can't bring back the classroom of, you know, the 30 kids, maybe we can bring back the 10 who are off, like we have completely, you know?
You know, that's a brilliant question, brilliant question. And I have a brilliant member of our leadership team, Ms. Baneck. I'd like you to talk about some of the work you're doing with your regional assistant superintendent colleagues about some pilots that we're hoping, again, while we're on pause to add pilots, that we can hopefully stand up very soon that really focus on kids that are struggling. Ms. Baneck, would you like to share a little bit about some of that work?
I can if she's not able to join us.
I see her on. I know she was looking and Mark, I think she had two schools, Stone, Westfield.
We have several schools that are trying to do exactly what Ms. Omech stated, which is an excellent idea. We were actually getting ready to stand those up this week. To be honest with you, we had them ready to go. One at Mount Vernon High School and one at Stone Middle School. To do exactly what you said, they were targeting some of their most at-risk students with multiple Fs and Ds to bring them in, in a cohort of anywhere from 20 to 30 students. And unfortunately, with the pause, we were unable to do that. But once mitigation factors and health factors change, we will absolutely do that. And you are 100% spot on with that idea.
No, I appreciate the response. I mean, I guess I'm thinking, Dr. Braybrand, right on the ground with pause. And this might be a ridiculous, crazy, you know, pushback if you need to. But realistically, in a particular community, in a particular school, there may be no cases. I mean, I'm looking at like these patterns here as to what's going on. And a lot, some of them are concentrated. So is there not thinking around that? Like an intersection of geographic and high needs where there's no risk or very low risk? Because those are just two pilots and they're pilots, you know? And I don't know, I think we can do more in that sense. But I know I'm way over time, sorry.
That's all right. That was a gentle, I was just about to give you a gentle reminder. Dr. Braybrand, if you want to answer that. But I also want to flag for you, I think I moved on to Ms. Omech before you were able to address Ms. Keys-Gamara's question. So I also want to give you time back to be able to do that, too.
Well, Ms. Omech, I would say, I mean, you've got great points. It's layering more complexity. Are we going to be just open in some places and not others? Or will we have a greater threshold for staying open in some parts of our county? We want to focus on student needs and we want to focus on metrics. And we're working to be as flexible and nimble. I mean, we've been more that way than we've ever been, I believe. But yeah, there's more we can look at doing. And are our kids in greatest need? What can we do to push ourselves to serve them some way, somehow? I don't remember what Ms. Keys-Gamara's question was that I didn't answer. I did agree with her. But if she doesn't feel I answered something, I'll be glad to have me or someone on staff do so.
Sorry, I couldn't get it off again. Dr. Braybrand, I was raising the question about as we monitor how we're doing because we've got, you know, we've got to do two things at once here. I was asking how we are making sure we're getting feedback from these diverse groups across the county, including staff members of different ages, special education, people from different groups all across the region. Because the presentation we had a few weeks ago, we did not have the level of diversity that I think would assure our community that we're really looking to get broad spectrum of information.
No, that's helpful feedback. I mean, that's helpful feedback. I think it's one of the real challenges when we bring things. There's so many factors that we need to look at and we do look at. And sometimes we're only bringing you a snapshot of a very large, you know, a piece of a painting, you know, a scraping from just a painting and how to show the whole picture. We did not show you the whole picture with what we had at return to school from our pilots. And, you know, we'll work to do that so that people make sure. That's why I think you all wisely had another return to school work session today. We need to talk about this frequently. We want to share what we're doing. Honestly, I think we need to do a better job of sharing with you and our community all the work we are doing and updating you as often as need be so that we don't have individual stories, which we need that feedback, become the dominant narrative, especially if they don't represent all of the work that we actually are doing. That doesn't mean we don't need feedback if it's not working well. But we will work to bring pilots that have all of those pieces that you asked for.
Thank you.
Ms. Cohen, could I just add 30 seconds on to Dr. Braybrand? I just wanted to remind the board and share that when we first started the pilot schools, it was very, very small. And we really started where there was interest with the teacher and the principal. And so as we expand, we're doing exactly what you said, Ms. Karen Keys-Gamara, just trying to ensure that it's broadened, that there are different groups, different ages and different parts of the county and different programs. But that wasn't the initial intent when it started.
Yeah, by the way, Ms. Keys-Gamara, I went back to look. We did have Bush Hill Elementary over near Route 1 and a special ed teacher from there. But we did not hit every category, every age of people, all of those factors. That's helpful feedback for us as we do future RTS work sessions with you.
All right, next I have Ms. Bukarski, followed by Ms. Marin.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. I just wanted to share, Dr. Braybrand, that I'm actually not as concerned as some of my colleagues are with making the health metrics super simple or anything like that. You know, I want them to be thorough. I want us to be able to communicate well. But I'm much more worried about people just looking at our behaviors and our decision-making, using these metrics and have it make sense. And what I mean by that is when in the past month, the cases have been going up. And in the past week and a half, they've been going up at a very steady clip. You know, to send something out to the community to say, hey, we're aware of this. Be prepared. Because the day before, you know, the disruption that causes to families and particularly to children, it's just, it's a lot. And I realize it's ever-changing, but I think we could have done better in this particular case. And, you know, I'll just leave it at that. I wanted to quickly also get the Phase 5. That was the population of students in special education. I know this is something that Ms. Seismar Heizer and I have been working with Ms. Boyd behind the scenes. But after our work sessions, what we thought the intent of the board to be to really capture a large number of these children who are extremely vulnerable and who have very high needs, spending the majority of their day in self-contained classrooms. But what actually came out in practical terms was really just a very small number handful of kids. I want to know what the plan is for the rest of these children who've got very high needs and are not being captured now and are being lumped into those, you know, just general education phasing in. I'm very, very concerned for this problem. Thank you.
Thank you on the communications. John Torrey's on. OCCR did give a notion on Friday that we would be looking at the metrics. But we'll try to be clear about that. And I know Dr. Boyd has talked with you and with Ms. Seismar Heizer and has been working through the issue of getting more of those kids in our groups sooner. Dr. Boyd, anything you'd want to add about that at this moment?
I'm sorry, it took a moment to activate my microphone. Yes, and Ms. Bukarski and Ms. Seismar Heizer, first, thank you so much for collaborating with us. I certainly appreciate your feedback. And we are working to clarify. I do want to share that, you know, our school-based administrators certainly have a desire to support our students with disabilities and bringing those students back. And we needed to add more clarity in order to support their decision-making. So we have recently shared at our last principals briefing some updated information around what modified instruction looks like and how that is reflected for students who are in the general education curriculum relative to our intensive support needs group. And those administrators are working on with that updated information and updated resources and materials identifying students who meet the criteria for intensive support needs. And so that is an ongoing process. And we've certainly heard the stakeholder feedback. And we appreciate Ms. Seismar Heizer and Ms. Bukarski for being advocates and doing work and collaborating with us.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Next, we have Ms. Marin, followed by Dr. Anderson.
Thanks. Yeah, I know earlier, I did mention something about buses and temperature checks. Again, I just want to underscore, the community really needs to understand what's happening there. You know, with the mask wearing, the temperature checking, which temp, I can't remember which colleague asked about the monitors that don't work in certain temperatures. But it leads into an next question. And, you know, I've gotten outreach from many kind parents and community members who want to help. What are the volunteer opportunities for people to step in? We've talked about that we don't have enough bus monitors, that we don't have enough people checking temperatures of the audit groups. You know, I've been kind of keeping these folks in, you know, a list of them to say, hey, here's the opportunity. When can we train volunteers to come in and help? Can they help with the audits most, you know, expediently?
Biggest thing they could do right now is sign up to become a monitor and we'll pay them.
Well, yeah, but these are, I understand, I meant to mention that too, yes. And I have shared that. But, you know, for parents who might have an hour or two, you know, maybe they can be at the bus stop. Or can they come in? Is it once a week that they come in to audit? I mean, I looked at the monitoring script, you know, people have hours and hours. But if it's an hour day.
Well, here's, we can look at that. The CDC has asked us to look at limiting visitors. Your point, though, is it's visitors with a purpose, volunteers with a purpose. And is there, is there, are there needs unmet that could be met by volunteers? And, you know, at our next RTS, I'll look at that in a more targeted approach. I don't have a complete answer for that right now. I'd say part of it is trying to limit visitors has been the mindset from the CDC at the beginning. But what can we do for folks who don't want to come in daily as monitors? That's still the number one thing I would tell you.
Can you actually speak more to, you know, can people choose to be in one class as a monitor? Do they have to be even for the whole day? Can it be half-day? But also, I want to say that the temperature checks and the bus help, that would not be outside. I mean, it would not be in the school building. So you could have, you know, people there to, you know, be with the kid if he or she refuses to wear the mask or to do the temperature checks so the drivers don't have to get off the bus, you know, which he or she can't. So, but yeah, but the monitor.
Well, we have a few principals here. Let me let them through their real life about monitors, how the monitor, the day in a life of a monitor will look for them at the schools.
Yeah, and again, and I'll just say for marketing purposes, because I've shared the link, you know, being able to describe, this is a one-hour commitment. This is a two-hour commitment. How many hours a week is it? That would go a long way.
Okay, hey, Mark, I know we've got a medley of principals. Do you want to start with the group that you brought and, or that came and call out who can answer some of those, please, Mr. Greenfeller?
Well, it looks like three of them just left like one minute before the question. But it looks like Jeff is still on the call with us. And Jeff certainly could maybe weigh in and answer some of those questions.
Jeff, anything you would share about monitors, how that might look at a high school like Marshall or other high schools? And Jeff may have had to step away. What will remember that is one of our future protocols. I know we talked about having the principals like the first hour and they may have left since we're past, or we're actually up on two hours. They may have had other things they needed to do today. So you know what? To be honest, Ms. Marin, if Mr. Litz, Mr. Litz, are you there?
I am here. I apologize, I had to step away for a moment.
That's all right. The day in a life of a monitor, what monitors might be doing at a Marshall High School or other high schools with your colleagues in middle schools?
So, can you speak more to like the time commitment of people? You know, would be there all day? Is it an hour a week? Is it one class, multiple classes? That would be helpful, thank you.
So I would anticipate that monitors will be at school for the majority of the days, most of the days per week, as many of us have sections that need to be, well, you know, for our all virtual ADA teachers, for example, we're going to need coverage for the vast majority of those classes. And so, yes, I would anticipate that a lot of our monitors will be working in several classes per day. But that could also vary from school to school. Certainly in a high school, I can see our monitors being here the majority of the day, each day, Tuesday through Friday.
Okay, thank you.
I think Mr. McDonald wanted to weigh in as well.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Yes, Mr. Litz really captured most of what I was going to say. We've provided the funding for monitors and hourly allotment. So schools do have that flexibility. And so if they're able to work with their needs and fit in different individuals to meet that need in different ways, they can. So they have that flexibility. Our advertisement really is geared towards people working in that classroom or in that really is geared towards people working in that classroom or in that school for a full day. But there may be situations where schools have a portion of a day or can fit two people together to meet the need.
Great. Ms. Marin, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, thank you.
Sure. Dr. Anderson, you're up next. And then, and let's, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just saying thank you so much. One of the things that I wanted to ask, I know this is a question that I asked on Thursday night, and it came up again today. While we didn't have a lot of special education staff that were available to give us any feedback, I do know that Mark is here, and I'm not sure if Becky's returned. Is there anybody who can give us any kind of feedback regarding how things are going and our, some of our special education classes, particularly self-contained?
I know you called on me, Dr. Anderson. I think Michelle might be more poised to answer that question. I know our pilots have a range of different programs going on, but I know Michelle has many of special ed programs up and running in the school. So let me let her give first crack, and then I'm happy to fill in behind if needed.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Greenfeller. Dr. Anderson, we have been working very closely with our special education classes that are in. And in fact, we obtained responses from 51 staff, 22 staff at elementary, and 14 from second, excuse me, representing 22 elementary schools and 14 secondary schools. Combine that 51 staff responses. And that was representative of ECCB classes, Enhanced OT classes, our IBIDS classes, our CATD classes, and our NCE classes. And again, I have this information compiled, and I'm happy to share it with you. But just for some highlights, some positives for the concurrent instruction, where students are learning routines, virtual instruction is going well, students have been able to transfer skills learned online to in-person instruction, pretty good since there are only two in-person students. So a number of our classes, a small number. So those were some of the things that were working well. Some things that were challenges that were listed, student skills, it's difficult.
Go ahead, Dr. Boyd, and finish. That's important feedback for the board.
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Boyd. It's difficult supporting concurrent instruction because some of the students, based on skills that are nonverbal, they don't have the ability to work independently, attention skills, varying student abilities, the need for a number of our students to have hand-over-hand instruction and support to engage, and challenges with students returning from breaks when they're online. And again, that speaks to the teacher trying to go between and varying supports that may be in that virtual space. Staffing concerns, inadequate staffing to support online and in-person instruction, challenges with lunch coverage, supporting language barriers that may be reflected from some of our families where English isn't the first language, and the limited number of substitutes to cover in-person instruction. So I tried to hit the highlights just as you talked about. We certainly, while there are places that are going very well on the day of our board meeting, I went and saw a couple of schools that it was going great. But we certainly don't want to mislead anyone. We certainly do have classes that are having challenges. And so we're trying to work through that.
Thank you. Speaking of challenges, one of the things I know we all have talked about, we continue to hear, are the challenges with PPE. And again, this is something that I've shared before that I want to underscore. This is low-hanging fruit because we have the PPE. We need to make sure it gets in the hands of staff and of bus drivers. We should not have any issues with, I don't have gloves, I've run out of gloves, because Mr. Smith shared very, you know, very thoroughly how many of those materials we've procured. And so we have got to find a way to get it in the hands of people. We should not hear any more PPE shortages just because it's in storage. So I really implore us to get that stuff out into the schools and onto the buses. The other question that I have is regarding guidance for specialists. I know we touched briefly on this on Thursday, but I would like some more information regarding how to essentially cohort our specialists or itinerants who are working in multiple buildings.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Presidio has guidance that we've given to specialists that can speak to that. Dr. Presidio?
Sure. We've definitely developed some additional health and safety guidance based on the particular specialist role. So, you know, for example, music teachers, we've got additional health and safety guidelines with respect to the setup of the classrooms, make sure that students and staff are safe. So we have those health and safety guidelines. But I think the concern, maybe, Dr. Anderson, that you're getting at is specialists themselves being in multiple different rooms with different groups of students throughout the day. And I think the major request we've had is for those individuals to be able to work virtually. In some instances, there's some possibilities for that. And in some instances, for itinerant teachers, there's some possibility to do that. Or in some cases, where a school might be able to have some additional classroom monitor support. But overall, it's really important to keep in mind that our specialists in our elementary program, so again, thinking about our music teachers, our art teachers, our PE teachers, those individuals are actually how we provide planning time for our teachers. So with the teacher, the classroom teacher would need to have the ability for the specialist to cover the class so that they can get their planning time. So it's very difficult for our building principals to develop schedules where those specialists could work virtually.
Okay. Not to add to this matter, but this is a question that came up as you were discussing how monitors were helping to support specialists from having to navigate multiple student groups. Are we shifting the issue from, or the challenge from specialists navigating multiple groups to monitors navigating multiple groups?
No, I was just pointing at some instances where there might be a particular specialist that has significant issues or challenges. That might be one of the possible solutions as an exception. But the general rule is that our specialists are needed to not only provide the instruction, but needed to provide the classroom coverage for classroom teachers to get their planning time.
Right. Okay. Thank you. The next thing that I have is regarding the recommendations that were shared by the teachers who presented last Thursday. I know it's been just a few days, but I just want to be sure that we raise those concerns, whatever we can do to reduce their workload. I want to be sure that we're taking advantage of that. And I know she shared three different points. If we can go ahead and acknowledge that. And I did leave some time on the table from my last turn. I'd like to reclaim that time. Thank you. And it's just one more question. Well, rather, one more comment. I appreciate the spirit of trying to use our volunteers to help support what is happening on our buses and in our classrooms. But I want to be sure that we're treading lightly here because I'm concerned that the introduction of more individuals with whom we're not sure of their health status might further compromise the very issues that we're trying to mitigate. So I want to be sure that when that is evaluated, that it's being done very, very carefully and with high guidance from the health department. That said for me at this point, but I would like to have an answer regarding the considerations that were shared by the teacher last week. I want to be sure that somebody's still minding those ideas.
Sure. We're definitely, we're definitely looking into those. I mean, that was just the other day. And I can tell you, though, I'm able to report that, you know, one of the items is underway and was underway, which is the request for additional curriculum materials and supports.
Right.
That is the work that the instructional services team and the Department of Special Services and other central offices continue to work on. And we are building out those materials for the remainder of the year. It's very time-intensive, of course, for a small staff to do that. So we are building them out quarter by quarter. But that was one of the requests, was to have those built up for the remainder of the year. And we're doing that. And we are reviving, improving those resources based on feedback of teachers that we have been soliciting to help us make them even of better quality and more effective for folks in the classroom.
Thank you.
Seeing that everybody's gotten one turn this round, I'm going to go ahead and take mine. And then my suggestion would be, I see that there are other hands that are up. I know our goal was to end at four. I would say, since there's not a decision-making piece that needs to happen here, as long as we keep seven people that's a quorum, if there's board members who need to drop off after this round, they're certainly welcome to. But it seems like there are more people who would like another round. So begging your forgiveness, Dr. Braybrand, that we are pushing it back a little, that extra half-hour, we would appreciate one more round.
Well, I'll say this, if you guys can end at 4:30, that will be seen as a wonderful gift for our leadership team to do some of the evening work that I know they have to do. But if we need to stay till 4:30, we'll certainly do so.
We will do our best to hang tight there. I'm glad to follow the conversations about CATD and ID. And I know in Enhanced OT and PAC, and I understand that I'm becoming of a broken record here. But I do feel like this is kind of the key piece in what we're doing. Because you guys have made a decision to say that there's a higher threshold because you feel that those kids need in-person more. You know, my biggest concern continues to be that we have many kids in Groups 1 through 4 who are just not able to consistently rely on keeping those mitigation strategies tight for all kinds of reasons. They need help with toileting and diapering and feeding and have G-tubes and need a lot of physical help, and also have the hardest time wearing a mask. So my ask to you would be that we put special focus for the audit teams on our, on those classes, on our special populations, to really have a good assessment, because it may be a whole other story than what is happening with other groups.
Now, you know what? That's great feedback. I know Jeff is still here. And Jeff, we can look at how we may increase the frequency of some areas based on the needs of the kids. And frankly, even based on what we find in our initial audits, places that were doing well may need less frequent checks. And Jeff, some of the places that we see need improvement may need to have more frequent return by the team. So that's good feedback. Anything, Jeff, you would want to add?
Yeah, just real quickly, absolutely, Dr. Brayman. I mean, this will be our baseline, and we can constantly adapt and adjust. This, this whole thing is creationism. Nobody's ever been through it. So everything we do will be an improvement. And the feedback we've received today has been, has been great.
I just think, I know, I'm sure that you can appreciate that there's a big frustration here, that that CDC says that third piece is so important. We've had Groups 1 through 4 in for some time. We know that that is our toughest group to get it right. We have to get it right. We have more medically fragile kids in that group than we do anywhere else. We have to get this right, and we need to be on top of it. And we should have been on top of it before now. My question then to that point is, my advocacy to you would be that we have a way for employees to report, not a survey, an anonymous way that employees can report, so that audit teams maybe are triggered to go in and say, oh, we need to look a little bit closer at this. So my suggestion would be either we're able to use the employee ombudsman line to do that, which I'm sure there's a lot of overwhelm there, or we set up a separate tip line that employees can use to be able to report what's happening.
Well, thanks for that feedback. I'll figure out, I'll talk with Armando about the use of the ombudsman. That's a real possibility, because I love people to be able to have a personal face-to-face moment. I'll figure out the right way to look at that feedback. And I will just say this, Ms. Cohen, I really do appreciate the feedback. And you're right about being on it with the audit teams. But I believe when we report to you on the audit work, we'll be among the first school districts that have gone to this level of actually providing real data-driven information on mitigation strategies that we have seen. We'll still look around and see if others are doing it, but I think we're going to be among the first. I do agree, it would be better if we had done it earlier. But we are going to be doing it, and we'll do it well. And we'll certainly share you the update soon. And really focus on some of those schools with our neediest kids, at classrooms with our neediest kids.
Sure, I can, I can appreciate that. And I think we tend to take a Fairfax-first glance at things a lot of times. But I, you know, my advocacy is for the kids of Fairfax County and the families and the staff. So, you know, I feel really compelled to make sure that we're doing it. And when we see three outbreaks already in such a short period of time, you know, meaning that we know, not just anecdotally, but we have, you know, empirical evidence that something is going wrong with those mitigation strategies, even with a really small population of folks in. So, I mean, if that's not a key, and I will say, anecdotally, we hear that the health department has its own outbreaks there. So this is not to say that, that we are not the only people who, you know, have figured it out. I think this is universally an issue. So I want us to be guided. And when we get those audit metrics, I just want to make sure that we're able to break them out categorically. I agree with Ms. Bukarski that simplicity in those metrics is not, not what I'm going for. That said, we'll hope to the next round. I would ask my employee, my employees, sweet Lord, my colleagues to please just keep it going. And right now, I have the order, just as it's on the screen, which is Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Keys-Gamara, and Ms. Darrenat Kofax, except I see Ms. Seismar Heiser, we missed her in the last round. Rochna, my apologies. So with Ms. McLaughlin's permission, I would appreciate if we can let Ms. Seismar Heiser go for her second turn.
You can let Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Corbett Sanders go ahead of me. I can wait a little bit. That's okay.
I'm in no rush. It's fine. Go ahead, Rochna.
Thank you. All right. So I'll try to be quick. I wanted to first pick up on, Bukarski was talking about with Group 5. And just kind of remind my colleagues first that some of these groups that we're talking about phasing in now, Groups 5 and 6, contain a lot of kids who are pretty vulnerable and have some great needs. But I want to pick up, I'm really concerned about the identification of the Intensive Support Needs Group 5. You know, for some of these students, they're very much struggling with distance learning and trying to keep on the SOL track. And this could have life-altering changes to them if they can't manage to pass their SOLs or get their diploma. And so I'm really appreciative that we have a pilot to look at, using MTSS, to look at those who are struggling with Ds and Fs. But I feel like there's a lot more work that needed to be done to get to our special education students in Intensive Group 5 who didn't really get identified as I think they should have been. So if someone could speak to what changes we're making and how quickly we can do that, I'd appreciate it.
So, good afternoon, Ms. Seismar Heiser. So what we've done is respective to the Group 5 and Support Needs, we've clarified very, very explicitly that those students are, again, students who have two of their four core in the special ed settings. And again, that was the same thing as it had been, that those students are performing significantly low-grade level. And they're, and as a result, they have the modified instruction. But with the expectation for students who are in being instructed with the general curriculum, that the ultimate end goal is that those students would be demonstrating knowledge on that grade-level material. So again, based on Michelle's baseline, the instruction really is we're going beyond differentiation. We truly are having that daily objective. What I'm supposed to accomplish at the end of that day may be different than what is for the other students in terms of alignment with the standard. But at the end of that instructional sequence, that at the end of the day, at the end of the week, unit, et cetera, Michelle would also be expected to demonstrate knowledge on those grade-level standards identified in the SOL. And so we clarified that on the initial description and also made some additional examples that were more reflective of secondary on the supporting documents that we'll be sharing with you.
With all due respect, I'm just going to put out that modification you described is not able to be done for SOL curriculum at the secondary level. And I'm really concerned about, these are the students who are going to potentially really impact for the rest of their lives. So I really am very concerned about this. I'm just going to put that out there. I also just want to, you know, mention that, you know, I agree with everything my colleagues have said about, you know, making sure we get our mitigation measure and our audit teams correct. And I think the clarity, almost like a flashing yellow, Dr. Braybrand, of, hey, our metrics are kind of ending in the wrong direction, you know, is heads-up that, you know, if it continues for four more days, we may have to call it. And even the opposite of our metrics are trending in the right direction. So we may be starting to phase in. I do want to ask, what does the pause, how does it impact, you know, our future groups, health metrics aside, are we going to, if we push back Group 5, are we pushing back 6, 7, and 8? Or are we going to try to then do some concurrently, bring them back in, especially when you consider secondary, different buildings and different administrations? So if you could speak to the impact on our- administrations? So if you could speak to the impact on our other groups, that would be helpful.
We're still looking at the other groups, as I said. We'd still like to get 5 in before the winter break. I'm not sure about 6 yet. And, you know, we're still very tentatively looking at the remainder of our groups. We've got to follow our metrics. We've got to get our staffing done. We still have some challenges at our middle and high schools to look at the six feet of social distancing for some of our classes, where class size is high. And even when you split the kids in half, it's still above what the cap is for social distancing at six feet. But we have not made any plans at this point to change our timelines for our later groups, to push them out any later. So, again, and I know you know this, we just met on Thursday, we've had two full days of other activity, and we'll bring you updates around our timeline as soon as we have them, certainly at our next return-to-school work session. But we've not pushed any... Later.
And I'm trying not to repeat any questions I've been asked, but one question I've been asked by some parents is, we have some teacher workdays planned in anticipation of bringing certain groups in on certain dates. Are we going to look to change those so we don't impact the number of synchronous learning days virtually?
Yeah, you broke up a little bit. I think I know what you're asking. Dr. Presidio, they're asking about the asynchronous days before the groups would return. Are we making any changes to those, given that we've paused?
So we're still looking at that. Our leadership team needs to make a final decision on that as well. And I think the issues are similar to what Dr. Brabran said earlier about the date for the group's return. So we'll try to have information on that very soon.
Great, thank you. And then I do have a concern about where we are for staffing for subs. I've heard a lot of concerns about sub shortages and the impact of being able to have our groups in person, you know. I'm going to give you an update on that.
Sure, Sean, can you update? I think our sub fill rate's been very high thus far, and where we are with our sub pool?
Sure. So we currently have a little over 3,000 substitutes in our pool. We've confirmed with 630 of those subs that they are ready to go and work in-person to support in-person learning. We're continuously recruiting to add more individuals to the pool to support both virtual and in-person instruction. We're advertising through social media, through college websites, and we've also asked our principals to include a little blurb in their newsletters to families, and reaching out to the Virginia Employment Commission to see if we can tap into some folks who are unemployed in our community to come in and help serve in that capacity.
McDonald, isn't our sub fill rate right now extremely high? Isn't that a true statement? I know a lot of board members are hearing concerns about subs. Is our fill rate not extremely high?
Our fill rate has been high all school year. I think our lowest fill rate was 97.6. Most days, it's running at around 99.3, give or take a few points.
In a normal school year, Sean, what is the sub fill rate?
Last year, we were running in the mid to upper 80% fill rate range. So it's improved. I will say that, you know, I want to put out the caveat that with classrooms that are in virtual learning settings, we have asked that teachers not request a substitute for absences lasting fewer than three days. And so in those cases, the classrooms are going to asynchronous. We've built in a mechanism for principals to make a request for an exception to that as needed, and we're continuously looking at our capacity and making adjustments to that. But I do want to provide that caveat in terms of considering the context of the overall number.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Next, I have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. I do want to really touch on just a few things. First of all, Dr. Presidio, to the questions that were asked about specialists, I too have been hearing these concerns, and I'm very worried that when we think about the mitigation best practices, having a specialist move from room to room and exposed to high volumes of students, where the optimal is that students are kept in cohorts as much as possible. Have we again consulted with other school divisions in how they're looking at adhering to CDC best practices while also still looking at these classroom planning needs? Because I do understand those, but I really am worried with the approach we're taking about classroom coverage when it should be about safety and safety for students and for the employees who can sometimes see more than 100 kids in a day.
Right. So, again, you know, we're continuing to have that discussion with our principals. We have had conversations, of course, with other school divisions, and we are a member of a national consortium of large suburban county school districts who meet on a regular basis. And, you know, all of us are facing similar problems. I think when you get into the staffing and the scheduling, everybody's kind of unique in terms of how they do things. But with respect to the specialist needs and concerns, I mean, it's definitely a reasonable and understandable concern. So we are continuing to work with our principals to see what we can do, but we do have that challenge here in Fairfax, that in order to provide that planning time, we do rely on our specialists to be able to relieve the classroom teacher. So we're working on it as best we can, but we really don't have any great solutions at this point, as I said.
I appreciate your honesty. I do struggle to understand how Fairfax County can be so incredibly unique that we can't be taking lessons from other school divisions on how to accomplish the CDC best practices while also returning kids to school as safely and as quickly as possible. The other thing I wanted to just reemphasize, Dr. Brabran, is that I know Ms. Corbett Sanders asked the question of consulting with our Fairfax County Health Department when we make decisions like dialing up and dialing down. I would like to know, have you talked with the county executive when they are making their SRS decisions? Are they, you know, frequent contact with the Health Department on making any sort of closure decisions? And if so, then why wouldn't we have the same opportunities there for us?
Yeah, I assume that they work with their Health Department when they're making decisions. Brian certainly lets me know when they're closing or temporarily pausing on a site or reporting a case for SRS. He sends those to Marty and I. And I've never asked him, I already assumed that he communicated with the Health Department. I mean, we certainly do, and will continue to do so. And, look, the county should be proud of what they've done with SRS. They did it early. It was a small number of kids. They took the cohort approach, and they did a wonderful job, and they should be praised for their work. And we used much of their lessons to help with the work that we did, even as we were standing up our virtual return to get ready for cohort models. But we're going to continue to collaborate closely with the Health Department on all things.
Dr. Brabran, my concern was that when Dr. Boyd was speaking, she noted that we ran our plan by the Health Department, but that we weren't running a dial-up/dial-down decisions by them. And I find that concerning. Can you provide clarity for that?
Yeah, can you just repeat the last sentence, that we ran it by them, but not what?
Yes, so that we ran our initial dial-up/dial-down plan by the Health Department, but when you made this most recent decision on Group 5, it wasn't run by the Health Department. There's just, you're following your own plan.
Yeah, I mean, what I'd say is, we ran the thresholds for the decision-making by, here's the Health Department's point. Their point is, the last leg is the most important leg, how well we do mitigation in school. But what they said is the most important, and we know you and the community want to know as we're making decisions, proved to me how well it's being done. So that's bringing the data. And so we didn't go back to the Health Department on that, because frankly, we don't have that data from the mitigation strategies yet to share. I mean, Dr. Gloria, when I just talked to her last week with Dr. Boyd, said, Scott, your mitigation strategies are the game changer. Something Dr. Boyd said a bit ago that I called the nugget. There are school districts where COVID transmission is low, super low in the community, but schools do a sloppy job, and there's COVID in schools. Guess what? Those schools need to be closed. There's also districts where COVID is high transmission in the community, but because they do it so well, those schools remain open, and there's very low transmission. We've got to show that we can operate our mitigation strategies and keep COVID low in Fairfax County public schools, and we'll be able to operate with kids in school a whole lot longer, keep the kids that are in there, and bring in more kids. And that's going to be the fundamental nugget for us moving forward for return to school, how well we can do these mitigation strategies. You'll be able to track the data of cases, but you also need to hear and see from us how well we're doing it, because I know, and you're hearing from people in the community and from staff, saying that the mitigation strategies are not consistent. And to get solid green, Michelle knows, you got to get five for five. You got to get all five mitigation strategies consistent in schools to be in the green, to be the deep green. So that's what we're striving for, and we'll have data to share with you shortly.
Well, Ms. Cohen, I'll just say, I think that the public is understandably a bit disappointed that school divisions around the country have mitigation in place. They've had their kids in school since Labor Day, and we're supposed to be a premier school system. So I know everybody's working hard, Dr. Brabran, but I hope you can appreciate the disappointment that people are feeling, and we can't let mitigation be the drawback for much longer.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. McLaughlin. Time to move on to Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then Ms. Keys-Gamara after that.
Great, thank you. Two things. First, I want to talk about our IAs and specialists. I know that there are a number of IAs that have been told that their ADA accommodations cannot be accommodated because they're IAs and they need to be in the buildings. I'm a little confused by this, because I know our IAs are currently helping and providing supports in the virtual classroom. So if we could address that. And then the second piece on the flexibility with the specialist, one of the concerns, or one of the things I'm wondering is, rather than having our specialist going from room to room, is there a way that we can hire more monitors that can be in those rooms so that we have a concurrent model for our specialist? And then my third point, which I would love to hear from you, Dr. Brabran, you've heard so much, and you've been very patient, listening to all of our concerns and comments today. And so before we close out today, I would like you to kind of summarize what you heard and what you believe are the critical nuggets that you heard from us today, and how you're going to act upon them.
On the IAs or the specialists, Sean, do you want to share anything on the IAs about accommodations first?
Sure. So ultimately, when an ADA request comes in, you know, we take a look at that request individually. And so we have to look at what the employee's asking for and what the available resources are within the school building, and whether or not it's reasonable to make that accommodation. So there's no categorical decision-making that's being made. It really is an individualized process where we look at what the needs of both sides are and try our best to accommodate. If we're not able to accommodate, then we go through the process of looking at reassignment. And where that's not possible, then we would offer the final accommodation of a leave of absence. But we are working through trying to make those matches. We've had very few individuals where we have not been able to accommodate in some shape or form. And then we've gotten to the point where we would agree to a leave of absence in the end. So it's really the nature of the position, the nature of the need in the school that drives the decision-making around whether or not we can provide that accommodation.
So I also asked about the specialist and the concept of classroom monitors to fill in while they could concurrent teach. But going back to your IAs, have you looked at more than one building? So for example, a regional approach for allowing the IAs flexibility for virtual?
So to answer that second question, no, we've primarily focused on trying to accommodate folks within their assigned school building. We have not made it a practice to displace or involuntarily transfer individuals to move other individuals into those spots. We have had situations where schools have been able to work together and make those necessary accommodations, but we haven't forced displacement of individuals to this point.
I would consider calling it collaboration and see if we can find a way of accommodating those needs. And on the specialist?
So in terms of the specialist piece, and Ms. Corbett Sanders, I apologize if I missed the drift on your question. I'm trying to remember back to exactly what you were trying to get at. I think I recall. So I think, you know, the ask is whether or not we can hire additional monitors to go into classrooms to take the place of those specialists. Ultimately, we're utilizing those monitors to provide accommodations for individuals through the ADA process. Ultimately, if folks have other needs, that's something they would need to work with their principal on, and see if there are resources available to provide that support.
As far as the nuggets, well, the four C's are a good start. I mean, clarity around our plan, I know is one of the themes that the board and community have shared. We shared on Thursday our decision-making thresholds, and the reality is, COVID rates went so high so quick, and we were acting on those thresholds just days later. And we need to continue to be clear about the plan, especially clear that the mitigation strategies and the audits that we're starting are a big part of the final decision-making or our final approach to decision-making around return to school. And we're going to be bringing you that data shortly. We did have collaboration, honestly, and working more with the Health Department around testing and around the immunization. We need to have our teachers and educators at the front of the line. Communications, you guys got talking points while you were in this meeting. Tammy, Darnatt-Kofax, I appreciate so much complimenting us about the updated dashboard. And we need to keep the communications going strategically and being as simple as possible in what we say and how we say it. And we have more opportunities to do that moving forward. And if we can build confidence in what we've done, we have had a slow and steady approach. We've not been the fastest. We've not been the slowest. We're going to continue to have a measured approach and continue to show our mitigation works, and we'll continue slowly and steadily bringing students back. And we need to continue to do that with an urgency, especially for our most vulnerable kids and those that are really struggling in their grades, especially at the end of first quarter with the data that we have.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. You still had some time left that you had banked from your last couple. Do you want to use it now, or are you ready to move on?
I'll just quickly say that we've typically used the term fidelity of implementation in light of what we're dealing with with COVID. It's the consistency of the mitigation processes. And so if we can, you know, add that sea of consistency, and, you know, I think that you've captured much of what we've talked about today, but I think we've also had some questions about the staffing, and so if we can also address some of those going forward. But I really appreciate... But I really appreciate all you guys are doing, and I think that this focus on mitigation audit.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Dr. Brabran, be ready now. This may be a new, what are your nuggets from every work session?
I know. Actually, I was just thinking, when she said that, I'm thinking, I'm really going to have to up my game, and I will. But you know what? The fifth nugget was a C, so five Cs, I can remember that.
No, I think Ms. Corbett Sanders has now set the new standard for work sessions. All right, bringing us home, we have Ms. Keys-Gamarra and Ms. Darnett Kofax, and then hopefully we'll be all set for today.
Really quickly, Dr. Brabran, I emphasized earlier that we kind of have to, we have to do a couple of things at one time, obviously keeping up with the monitoring, the mitigation strategies, et cetera. But I also want to make sure that I mention the fact that I have noted in my contact with a number of students in my other job, just students experiencing a very high level of anxiety under the current circumstances. And so I just wanted us to have that on our radar as to how we might be able to monitor that, particularly our middle and high school students who are trying to put it all together and the pace, the workload, sometimes having difficulty with some of our technology. So I know that we've asked a lot of you today, but I did, I felt I would be remiss if I did not mention that this has to be on our radar.
Yes. And Ms. Keys-Gamarra, something I haven't had a chance to share with you or any of your board colleagues. Of course, we meet with SAC, our two members from each high school, and we do that every year, and I've had a chance to meet with them. But I also am proud to tell you that our equity folks have introduced, yes, in the middle of COVID, our student equity ambassadors, or our SEALs. Our student equity ambassador leaders are our SEALs. So our SEAL team is going to be out in schools, really pushing equity for us. We got to meet with them last week, and I could get you an update. They met with members of RAS, members of the leadership team, and we took a lot of notes about what they said they need to have happen in schools pronto, including that review of workload, the workload of grading. And so we'll have some updates to share with you very soon. But the Student Equity Ambassador program is up and running, and we can get you guys a report, certainly for the Brabran briefing, and then ultimately perhaps at a work session when the time is right.
That wasn't for me, right? No, that was for Dr. Brabran. You keep going.
That was my minute.
No, I really appreciate that, and I think there's a difference, though, between recognizing that we've got leaders that we can develop and recognizing that everyday kids are struggling with the new challenges of a virtual world and trying to bridge the gap and trying to apply to college and trying to be a middle schooler, et cetera, et cetera. And so those are the things that I know, I realize I'm giving you, you know, yet another task, and we've talked about this before, but it just has to be on our radar. So I appreciate that program you mentioned, but we've got to monitor how our kids are doing and put in interventions wherever we can. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra, you still have a little time left. Are you all set, or you want to ask another?
No, I'm going to gift Ms. Darnett Kofax with that time.
How many seconds is that, Ms. Cohen? How many additional seconds is that?
I'll have to ask Ms. Mahada.
That would be 20 seconds.
All right. Ms. Darnett Kofax, you've got 2 minutes 20 seconds to bring us home here.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, I probably won't need that much. My questions are simple at this point, but thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. I do appreciate the gift of time. Scott, in looking at the data dashboard about how many people have contacted, and I know it's not within our building necessarily, these are self-reported numbers, but how many staff are currently in our building? Do you have that number?
Oh, my goodness. Sean or Sloan, for groups one through four, Sloan, do you know off the top of your head how many staff? We had that on a slide somewhere.
No, I don't. I'm sorry. We have the number of students on the slide. We don't have the number of staff, so we'd have to get that for you.
If you could get that for us, that would be appreciated. And students, was how many, Sloan?
In groups one through four, it's about 8,300.
8,300.
I want to say it's about at least 1,000 teachers, Tammy, maybe 800.
Approximately, okay. Okay. 800 to 1,000. Okay, that's just helpful, just to know, like, who's in the building. So I appreciate that.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Darnett Kofax, I think Mr. McDonald quickly raises his hand, too, maybe just to give an assist there.
Oh, yes, please, Mr. McDonald.
Yeah, it's about 1,000 teachers at this point. We also have other teachers that are teaching in the building virtually from the school building.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Also, I do want to thank Dr. Anderson for bringing up what the teacher from Bush Hill had stated, and I do just want to reiterate, because I did reach out to the principal there to tell her that, you know, we are very concerned as a board, as a system, to try to, you know, get the work leveled down. We know, as everyone has talked on this call, we're driving, you know, we're driving the plane, what do we say, driving the cars, we're, you know, building the cars, we're driving it, all of those things still continue to be true. But I do think we need to very intensely listen to our teachers, particularly when they come to us and they talk about the realities of the pilot program. I do have a question about the pilot program at Bush Hill. It's my understanding that we did the four half-days there. Are we moving forward in that in any way? But I understand there could be transportation challenges with that. Is that correct?
We only did that with one class, Ms. Darnett Kofax, and it was one fourth-grade class, and there was no plans because of major transportation challenges and some other issues with that. We did let her try it just to see how it went, and actually, her fourth-grade teacher elected to transition to what the rest of the pilot was doing. So it was only for a short period of time, I want to say two weeks, but I can double-check with Mary and get back to you, but it was only the one class.
And it was mostly, was it a workload issue, or was it, I mean, since it's been disbanded, but I know we were kind of excited about that, or, you know, people were thinking that was a good option?
I think in all honesty, it was because they knew the feasibility of moving it forward on a massive scale. Division-wide was going to be a real challenge just from the logistics of the transportation and the busing was probably the most challenging thing we would have had to done if we would have went with all those different half-days, with all the different bell schedules and the mitigation. And Jeff can speak to this better than I can, but the mitigation needed between in the bus runs and all those things. So it would have almost been adding an entirely new transportation to the middle, you know, to the middle of the day, because it would have been a half-day. So that was my understanding, and we let her try it just to experiment and be fully transparent, and she did a good job with it, and they just decided to shift out of it to make it more consistent with the rest of the practices going on in the school.
Okay. Thank you. Is my time done, or I think I have 20 seconds, don't I?
Ms. Greenfather, you keep going, Ms. Kofax.
Okay, okay. All right. I don't have any further questions. I do want to state that, and I don't know if I stated this on last Thursday, but I was concerned about the high level of the percentage positivity rates and the differentiation between the two. And, you know, and here we found ourselves already rolling back. So I would say I reserve the right to continue as we, you know, if it gets better, I still would like to explore that, those levels of positivity rates and kind of have it straight through the whole, you know, every cohort, a kind of a unified number there. So that's a thought. And, you know, for me, as it always has been, if we can get that testing, again, Dr. Brabran and your team, and I will reach out to Dr. Boyd, is if we could talk about how the county can work in partnership with us. It's been so many months, and that's still such a priority, and I think people would feel safer if they knew that was happening.
Thank you. We will be following up right after this meeting, and then we'll update chairs in the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Darnett Kofax. I just wanted to quickly flag one more issue when we're talking about the issues with self-reporting and how many folks are having to see a bunch of other kids. We haven't really talked about service providers at all here. We're not only talking about multiple kids in multiple classrooms, we're talking about multiple schools across the whole system. So I'm positive that's on your radar, but I think that's one of those other areas of special attention where, when we're talking about contact tracing and mitigation and all of that good stuff, we want to have them on our brain. I just want to say I so appreciate everybody being willing to try a little bit different format, and I very much appreciate Ms. Sizemore-Hizer for putting her brain together with mine and figuring out if there was a way to do this a little bit differently. I echo what Ms. Darnett Kofax said, that I think the goal, while we have dates for every month for return to school, and our next one for the community to know is December 10th, I do agree that, I really appreciate very much you being responsive, that here we had something new and different, a big pivot, and there was confusion, and understandably, all kinds of disappointment from kindergarten families, some pre-K families, some special ed families, and teachers, too, who wanted to be there and had set their classrooms up, and kids who had set their clothes out already. And I don't want that to go unnoticed in all of this when we talk about metrics and science and data, that there are real feelings involved in this, and we would never want to miss that. So we appreciate your flexibility and the communities in giving us this extra opportunity to really flesh this out. The last thing I want to say, my apologies, I think I murdered Ms. Madeya's last name, and I so apologize, and I really appreciate Ms. Mulberg and Ms. Madeya and all the work that they do in helping us keep track of ourselves, which is nothing short of herding cats. So thank you, thank you very, very much. And with that, Dr. Brabran, unless you have something you want to add in closing?
Listen, thank you all very much. This was important. I really appreciate the board prioritizing return to school and having an update so timely right after we've made an important decision. This pause, I hope, is only temporary, and the mitigation strategies and the audit teams will be able to provide a narrative that allow us to continue to move forward in a responsible and measured fashion. And I really enjoyed the format today. So thank you and Rajna for coming up this style. I think a lot of information was shared, and I heard a lot of helpful things from board members to help our leadership team continue to collaborate with you all to serve our community and students in this pandemic. So thank you.
All right, my friends, with that, that's a wrap, and I hope everybody has a nice afternoon and evening.
Bye-bye.